Call this regular meeting, uh, Nelsonville City Council on Tuesday, May twenty seventh to order at no seven. Area one, Samper, Cleveland. Mr. Taylor, would you give the opening prayer, please?
Sure. Dear God, yesterday was Memorial Day. We honor remember the brave souls who gave their lives and service to our country. May their sacrifice be a reminder of a high cost of freedom. We pray for their families and loved ones who live with the pain of law, pain of loss. Please comfort them and grant them peace, knowing their loved ones legacy lives on. Let us never forget their courage and dedication. Thank you for the gift of your selfless service.
Let's call it all, please.
Mr. Lawson, Mr. Peck.
Here.
Mr. Coman.
Here.
Ms. Sonic.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Saul.
Here.
Mr. Flowers.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Lawson's on the way, just running a few minutes late. Um, did everyone receive the minutes from the May twelve meeting? Are there any additions or corrections?
I only have the ones that actually emailed.
Alright, uh, motion to accept those meetings, so, or minutes, I'm sorry.
So move.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Sonic, yes. Mr. Joseph Saul, yes. Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, auditor treasurer's report, Mr. Sappington.
Good evening, City Council, uh, Mr. City Manager, folks in the audience, and anyone watching at home. We will start with the treasurer's report. The treasurer, uh, sends his apologies. He had to work late today, um, uh, in his current report. So I will complete his report, or present his report for April. You'll see past the title page, the first page, total funds as of month end, seven million, six hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars and four cents. You can then see a breakdown per account, um, for interest earned, not just in the month, but in year-to-date, totaling up to seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred ninety-three dollars, sixty-two cents, which is a great deal of money. And I'm thankful for, unfortunately, it is down quite a bit from last year, which has pretty much everything to do with the federal funds rate dropping from about five point two, um, about three point nine five right now. And if you actually can see on the next page, our interest rates, a little bit below the federal funds rate at three point three and three point eight, respectively.
Uh, are, are those rates, uh, locked in for twelve months, seven months, a year, five months, or what?
Uh, the CD is, uh, he does have to turn it into twelve months, so they typically are locked in. Um, and then we put out for bid at the, as that time period is coming near.
Alright.
Um, and we receive bid back, bids back from banks. Um, typically, I will say, in fact, every bid I've been a part of, people think has come in the highest.
Yeah, I agree.
Which has been, uh, which we're also grateful for, because they obviously work for our business. Um, but we do try to get that number up. We usually come in under the federal funds rate. It would be great to earn closer to or above.
But yeah, five, five and a quarter, or five and a half, I think, when I first got involved with it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, of course, that's the year, like, the annual yield, that's not the actual percentage rate on a monthly basis.
Right.
So, uh, you had to lock it in for five months, seven months, twelve months.
Yeah.
And then if it renewed, you had to call them up, or it automatically renewed. Is that the way this thing works?
Uh, it's not, actually. So it won't automatically renew. It'll drop back into our general checking account if we don't renew it.
Oh, okay.
Um, which is that lower rate, three point three. Um, our checking has the same rate as the money market. Uh, I will say, on the checking and money market, we do ask peoples from time to time, because those aren't for terms. We ask them for promotional rates. Uh, so for example, in the fall, we asked for one, and I think it increased at point two-five percent, uh, which is a promotional temporary. It basically stays that way until the next time they adjust their rates, you know?
Yeah.
And on the next page, which will be the bank reconciliation, you see the treasurer's broken expenses by type, revenues by type, um, and I should say receipts. And on the next page, uh, revenues and expenses. Finding a difference of zero dollars and zero cents between the two. Uh, that's the treasurer's report.
Any other questions on the treasurer's report? Move to accept the treasurer's report.
Second.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Alright. Onto the auditor's report for April two thousand twenty-five. You see on the first page, the city's revenues. Uh, in my business, we work for, uh, not too different than Mr. Holmes' business. We look for very, uh, small words. When I say small, I mean not dramatic, but, uh, I put down here measurably outpaced expenses, revenue measurably outpaced expenses by a full million dollars, which we will, um, actually cover later in this report and in the meeting. Uh, but overall, uh, most of the operating expenses were covered, uh, by operating revenue, with some special revenue we'll talk about here in a minute. Um, you can see the fund balances at end of month, April, all funds combined, general funds, the combined street capital water. In the back of your report is a statement of cash position, um, as well as online, um, just backing up those numbers, so you guys can see that's what the system says. Uh, the credit card report is there for council's review. You can see things like BD Pharmacy, uh, which has to do with the medical license for the fire department, postage at the USPS, uh, Baumtree Medical, I think, is fire equipment, medical equipment specifically. You can see where we made the payment in the middle of the month. Uh, PDF filler is an Adobe PDF tool that allows us to take something like a scanned image of a document, and then fill it out electronically, so that folks don't have to suffer through my handwriting. Uh, I say mine, because mine's particularly bad around the building. Uh, but really helps with anybody who would like to turn a scan to their calendar. Indeed was advertising for jobs, including a pool positions, utility position, and a prosecution position. Um, and then finally, uh, fire department rescue equipment from, I think it's Fever, is that Fever? Um, those are the credit card transactions. A few updates from me in the office. I wanted to mention, very briefly, we mentioned it last time. If anybody watching, listening, maybe in attendance, hasn't filed their income taxes, please do. They are overdue. They were due on April fifteenth. You may be exempt if you have retirement or disability income, but if you've never filed an exemption form, uh, we're probably wanting to get that done with it. And if you're not exempt, uh, please file. Is that what's created? Yes, yeah, but it can be done in here at, if, like, we have folks all the time going in the printer, then we come in, or they come and, uh, fill it out here, and we send their form. Uh, and more fun news, but also along the same lines, the Regional Income Tax Agency sent a letter, which for me is the third of the last, second to the last page. It may be out of order to you guys, because I got a little out of order putting these together. Uh, but it's got the big logo at the top. Read it, send us a full reconciliation of our collections and costs. They did this last year as well. And I'm very grateful to everyone, you know, residents and businesses who filed online that saved costs. Uh, grateful to the council for putting this into place. But instead of charging the estimated fifty-five thousand for their services, they're lowering the amount to twenty-two thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars, which means, um, in four days, we will receive a refund of just short thirty-three thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-four. Uh, to put that in perspective, they collected for us, I should say, uh, processed for us one point nine million dollars, at a cost of twenty-two thousand, two hundred sixty-six, uh, which is, if somebody has a way to beat it, let me know, because I'm, I can't think of a way to beat that anywhere. Um.
Why didn't they discount?
Uh, so if you look through the math, uh, which I know is a little, um, confusing here, they basically say that their estimated cost of expenses for our account is lower than they expected.
Because of the size of it?
Uh, it could be the size. Uh, it also could be the type of transaction. So fewer people called or sent mail. More people sent electronic filings, for example. Um, I think it says in there too, maybe in the wording, if it did, it said in the email they sent to me. Um, sorry, I'm just trying to see this.
It does say average of two factors, uh,
Yeah.
the net overhead costs and the prorated share of overhead.
Yes, and the prorated share of overhead is all the members share this cost of basically like Rita employees, uh, for example. That number came in far under because of interest income. So we were talking about the interest rates are not quite the five percent they used to be, but because Rita was able to earn free cash on the money sitting in their accounts, they were able to pass the savings on to their members, um, had a prorated amount, um, based off our share of the collections. Um, so that's good. Thirty-three thousand dollars in savings. I hope that keeps up. Uh, this is the second year in a row. Last year, it cost us about nineteen thousand to collect about one point seven, eight million, what? Um, more good news, I'm gonna keep moving on to. Let me see what order I have it here in my report, so I don't give out of order. Oh, should I stop for any questions? He's talking a lot. But I'm not offering a chance to, okay. Uh, IRS determination letter. In everybody's packet, you'll see a determination letter from the Internal Revenue Service. Usually, that's not a fine letter. But this one is, because the mailing of the two thousand twenty-two W twos, um, was lost in the mail, uh, in the United States, lost in the mail, it's not a valid excuse, um, for not filing. Um, so we worked with the Internal Revenue Service, showed them our improved history, showed them our filing history. We caught up, uh, was actually very bad when I started. We didn't have annual or quarterly filings for seven years. Um, we got all those up in two thousand twenty amidst the theft investigation, which was a lot. And we also, um, showed them the processes that we had put in place to make sure nothing's ever mailed to them again. Um, it's all electronic, and, uh, anyway, they, they forgave the entire proposed penalty, so they did not issue the penalty. They basically had sent a letter saying, your mailing never showed up. We're considering dropping twenty-five thousand dollars on the city taxpayer, but they have decided to not, uh, charge the city that amount in total. It will be zero dollar cost. So, very grateful. You're gonna hear this very few times in the United States. I'm very grateful to the Internal Revenue Service and, uh, their staff. Their staff was actually incredibly friendly and helpful. Um, I have some good news to say on there, so, so. There is that. You might wonder, um, the date on the letter is February twenty-sixth, but you're hearing about it today in May. I made a conscious decision to just wait, um, because of the many changes at the federal, at the Internal Revenue Service right now. And I know that staffing changes can cause a lot of confusion, um, especially management changes, so I just waited to make sure nothing changed. You know, knock on wood, a lot, and didn't do it, and decided it was time to call it, uh, complete. Uh, my last bit of good news, the finance committee knows this, but I don't know if the public or the council knows this, but, um, in March, uh, late March, although I think the funds arrived in April, the USDA closed out our grant funds for the wastewater treatment project. Um, the USDA allows for a large percentage of savings to go to the grantee, which was, uh, I guess, a complicated way to say, if you don't spend all the grant money in a project like this, they're willing to give you a big chunk of it in cash. Um, or, well, bank wire, but in my business, that's called cash. Uh, so, they sent over six hundred thousand dollars to the city, um, out of those savings in the grant, um, to be used for paying the loan for the next year, uh, or two. And the other half to go towards any maintenance on the plant for the next several years. Um, at three hundred and seventy-five thousand for the maintenance, I think that hopefully will last a long time for a new plant. Uh, this is on your agenda tonight, to accept these funds and create the fund, required funds. I do want to make sure I say out loud, I don't have like ninety days left here. I want to say out loud for the cameras, the council, anyone who's here in here, those funds have to be allowed to be used. USDA, the federal government has to be reached out to by the city. You have to show what you're gonna use them for, and then you can spend them, so. Say something breaks up the plan, we have to actually ask before we can use it. Um, I want to make sure to say that.
When you say there's no time limit.
There's no time limit, no time limit at all. Uh, so, and those funds will basically just sit there waiting for when they're needed, so. Are those interest bearings?
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Um, when we create these, or if we create these funds and transfer the, um, unspent cash into that, will we still need to contact USDA before using the funds?
That's right.
With those accounts out there?
Including for loan payment. So the funding debts, I'm sorry, the debt service reserve fund, which two hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred sixty-two dollars will go into, that will cover about a year and a half. Um, well, actually, two years with the USDA payments. Even though those are standard and expected, they still said, please reach out ahead of time. Ask, and they will approve it, um, or not, but probably.
They just want accounting of the funds.
Yep. And so, that will, of course, the funding, the loan with the grant, um, which basically just means it's being subsidized by the federal government. Um, that will, of course, save an enormous sum of money for the next two years from our sewer fund that can go towards general maintenance, operating, so on.
Is that just gonna be sitting on a, a non-interest-bearing account and just sitting there waiting for, for, for something to happen at the sewer plant, or waiting for us to come up with an idea how to spend the money?
Uh, it will be interest-bearing.
It will be?
Yep, so all the funds at the city have to be sitting in an account that earns interest.
So where would that money be put, if it's an interest-bearing, with, with the people's banks?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So what, I've actually notified the, well, it would have been the acting manager before the current manager, um, and the, um, treasurer, that there was additional large funds. Uh, it might be worth it to consider setting more funds in an investment, like a C, um, so we get those higher interest rates, um, because these funds, I mean, for some time, won't be touched. So we know they'll be sitting there, and that kind of money.
Hopefully they will.
Right, well, that, that, that means that we can count on setting them aside and some type of safe investment, um, and earn extra interest. Yes.
What fund does the interest go into? A general fund, or does it?
It does, yes.
So, even though we got it from this nice little thing, it would go into our general fund that we could use as we choose?
That's right. That's right. Unless the council changes the policy, which is on the books, which council can do. Uh, it's not my recommendation, but, um, you know, future councils could change that, uh, if you guys just mind. I think that covers most of my good news. I wanted to make note of a couple things. I know the city manager's gonna talk about it later. Um, uh, we are not undergoing the check report procedure tonight, and there's several good reasons we've discussed, um, uh, that I think will be helpful to both the city, to the vendors, to the staff. Uh, but most importantly, for me, the main reason is stability. Uh, so I thank the council for making a permanent hire. Uh, I can't thank him here, he's not here, but Mr. Tolliver is fantastic at doing like three jobs at the same time. Uh, but the truth is, is that that's very tough to do. And even before him, when this practice started, there was deeper instability. Um, as many of the councils here understood, contracts signed, but told they weren't signed. Contracts not signed, but we were told they were signed. And in my business, you really have to know. You have to know, i- am I to pay this or not? Um, the check report provided a sense of stability, that process, um, that was unstable. Um, but having a permanent city manager, uh, gives us more effective stability. Uh, so thank you for that. Um, I put strategic planning in here, but I'm gonna leave it to, I think, to some other folks to talk about, um, who I know are working on it. Uh, I just wanted to say lastly, thanks to Buckdole, Village of Buckdole, and Nelsonville Police Department, who, um, put on a great Memorial Day parade. Uh, the police department didn't put it on, but was at the front and back, and then, uh, allowed me to ride along, as well as, uh, my boyfriend Jonathan. We thought we'd be in with the chief, with the dog, uh, but instead, we got thrown into, um, a cruiser that only had a comfortable space for one of us. And, uh, John had to sit back behind bars.
It wasn't good.
And, uh, um, it was just fun. It was really fun.
Did you coffee?
We didn't coffee. Uh, but if you need a picture, it's on my Facebook. I told him, make a face like you just got arrested, and anyway, it was a good time. So thanks for that. Thanks to them for bringing us along, and thanks to Village of Buckdole for great service. And I will happily shut up, because I think that's too much. Any questions?
Uh, are there any other questions, or Mr. Sappington? If not, motion to accept the.
I have one quick question.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
Uh, looking at your report, um, let me just find it right here. I circled everything. The, um, water and sewer, um, figure right here, water, one million, six hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars, twenty-five cents.
Yes.
And then the, the sewer, one, one million, one hundred and fifteen-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven.
Yes.
Where does that money go? Uh, how's it spent? Uh, why is it so much? Yeah, I mean, uh, it, to me, that's money that the citizens have spent, sent in.
Mm-hmm.
So what do we do with it if it's only legislated for the water in the sewer?
That's a really good question. So, um, the water fund is particular, I'll start, hopefully I catch all those questions in, in one round.
Tell me later, if you want, but I'm.
No, it's a good question. The water fund is, is, is very healthy, um, compared to past days. Um, Mr. Coman, um, Mr. Taylor, I should say, uh, councilman and council president, and, um, even just folks who may have watched on TV at the time, might remember two thousand sixteen or seventeen. We were a couple loan payments away at the water fund from almost no money. Um, so it's much stronger. Uh, the water fund is fully water charges. The sewer fund is fully sewer charges, and again, paid for by the residents and businesses in the district, to include Buckdole, Lake City, um, Carbon Hill, um, and they have to go towards purposes that serve, um, the public's, uh, need in both water and sewer. This can include administration. Um, in fact, it should, frankly, uh, most cities believe in the, I, that's a recommendation I've made to the council every year as well. Uh, the question of, um, the strength of the sewer fund is a little different because of the enormous loans taken on from the water, or, excuse me, sewer plant fund.
I understand that, yes.
So even though it's in the million-dollar figures, it doesn't ring quite as strong to me as it might if it was, say, maybe at two million. And that's not an arbitrary figure. That's because our loans there have reached now over one thousand a year. Excuse me, and, um.
And is that for the sewer fund?
Yeah.
I mean, that's the cost of the sewer.
Yeah.
Our part of it.
That's right.
Right.
And so, you know, those, those are significant, and, um.
I guess my point is,
Yep.
is, is, uh, one point six million dollars. It seems like, um, the, the, the citizens are paying more than their, their share for the water. And I don't know if that's, that's the way that's supposed to work. So I guess the question is, you just said, at one point, it was a way, uh, two payments away from not, not being solvent, or, I, I took it.
Yeah.
And, um, now we've got one point six. I just wondered, uh, is it for repairs, water line repairs and stuff like that? Is that what it can be used for?
Yeah, it should be used for maintaining anything in the water system, including administering it.
Um, and the service department, do they get paid out of that?
Mm-hmm.
Water, out of the water fund?
And the sewer fund, yeah.
Yep, part of the owner's salary, part of the city manager's salary, part of, uh, admitting to other people with that term, always by the city. I understand. Um, but there's also, we have water, if we're gonna do more water line projects, we can use that as, you know, so, you know, as leverage, so, to have additional funds. Um.
I think too, um, I'll drop a, I'll drop like a four-sentence version of what I was gonna say about strategic planning gap here at the city, because I think this really fits. I'm glad you asked, because it really. I told the new city manager on his second first day, uh, because he had a first day twenty years ago, right? Um, here at the city.
Yeah, I remember.
I remember. And I told him on his se- the second first day. Um, and it's the same thing I told, I think, like, four city managers now. Um, which is the most problematic question I get, and this is not what you ask, but I get asked this a lot. And, and I think it just needs brought up. The most problematic question I get is, can we afford that? And the reason I say that is because with six, seven million dollars in the bank, we could buy about fifteen percent of the property in Nelsonville and own all of it. The question actually should be, should we? What, what is our goal? What's our mission? What's our vision? What's our strategic plan? Unfortunately, we have almost none of that here at the city. Uh, we have a version made back when Mr. Holmes was here twenty years ago. Um, but it hasn't been updated. We don't have it continued. Um, so what I kinda would like to answer your question with is, you're right. One point six million is a lot to all of us in this room. But it's not a lot compared to the cost of fixing our water infrastructure. And so, what we really need, and this is, I'm on my high horse a little bit, uh, more as a citizen than auditor, is what we desperately need is some type of comprehensive plan that we can use to say, we're on track to fix these things, or we're not on track to fix these things.
Um, would that include the storms to it?
Mm-hmm. We des- we honestly, when I say comprehensive, I mean all our funds. Like, we need a, we des- and I know Mr. Holmes actually wants to work on this. I know Mr. Coman has brought it up, uh, more times than I have fingers and toes. Um, but it's, with all the change going on, we desperately need
Yeah.
a guidebook to what the next twenty years are like. Because in twenty years, or I'm sorry, if we look at twenty years of what we need to fix, one point six might seem like, I don't know.
Right.
If that makes sense.
Chestnut project alone is not gonna be covered by one point six million dollars.
What project?
Chestnut. You've got, you've got a sewer, you've got a sewer line that's twenty feet on one end, all the way down to, what, forty feet on the other end of Chestnut. You've got water lines in there, so that's gonna be a multi-million dollar project, just to put it back to asphalt. So, you, you need the funds. This is, you know, you can't risk losing it. Plus, you'll know what's gonna happen. You might have another break.
Yeah, as, as an example, the water line that went, goes from the water treatment plant across the river, under the river, when that broke, I don't remember the number, but I think it was around five hundred thousand, wasn't it?
About six.
Yeah. And.
I don't remember the exact amount, but.
I don't either.
Between five, six.
Yeah.
Big directional driven under the river.
Right, so if we hadn't had those funds there, we'd been in big trouble. I mean, it was the main line under the river. So on big.
So one big question. The water and sewage fund, what we charge for them, what we give for them, they only go to the water and sewage, correct? They don't go to any other funding or whatever, which is this, which is why I think he's trying to get the point at. Water and sewer funds go strictly for the water and sewage. We don't use them for anything else.
They stay there, that's correct. They, we're not allowed to trans. Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I don't mean the-
Please, they've heard my voice enough tonight, I think.
Correct, if I'm wrong, but I believe those are proprietary accounts, which mean they can only be used for water and sewage. You cannot take money, any part of that one point six, and do the fire department or the police department. It is a proprietary account, and by law, it has to be used there. And I would only say this to you, we think one point six million dollars is a lot of money? No, it's just not. It really isn't. And I will go back 20 years, and I'll tell you what, what the people up on Franklin Street, when we redid Franklin Street, we did it right. We did the sidewalks, we did everything exactly the way. And while everybody else in the community said, I have no problem with you doing it there, but when you come to my neighborhood, I expect the same treatment. And they should get the same treatment. So, we've got a lot of neighborhoods that we gotta work on. And I think, I think the auditor has done a tremendous job. But we need that account. That, that's not we need that.
So a couple questions. So what has been brought up that the water funding and stuff pays employees' wages as far as increasing for the city, does that help out with the only water department or the entire city?
No, that only applies to water and sewer, I believe I'm correct.
I, I might need the question repeated.
Yeah.
What it is.
So, so it does cover some employees? It does cover some employees?
No, that's what I'm saying, but it, but it covers the employees from the water department and the sewage department, not at all the employees, correct?
It covers part of my salary.
Correct. Or the auditor's salary.
Because we're
You're part of that.
Part of that salary comes out of that proprietary.
Right, but as far as everybody else, the police department, the fire department, and the rest utility division, it doesn't come under that, correct?
The police and the fire, now the utility commission, it would, but not police and fire.
Okay.
Did someone, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, all right. Is there any other council discussion? Okay, motion to accept the auditor's report for paper. Salute.
Thank you.
Can you sign?
Yes.
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 Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
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 Mr. President, I'll motion that we accept the credit card report as well.
Sorry.
All right. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Matt?
Yes.
Mr. Son?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Senator. Are there any citizens' comments? Business and organizational, I believe Mr. Courtney is here from the Ad Hoc Commission.
Good evening, members of council, friends and neighbors. Hope everybody had a wonderful Memorial Day. Just a couple things here for you all. We met on Wednesday, May 21st for regular meeting. It was a productive conversation. We started off discussing the meeting we had with city employees, that town hall meeting that happened on the 20th in the morning. That meeting was very short, but also productive. The main concern we heard from city employees was, when the government transitions, what impact does that have on the contracts, right? The collective bargaining and all that, that we've done. Great for them to bring that up to us. Those are still in place, you know, the work of perpetual succession has been thrown around a lot about, you know, City Nelsonville is not gonna stop existing. But, you know, historically, some governments and some entities have tried, when a transition like this happens, to get out of debts and track all obligations. We don't have any reason to believe City Nelsonville would try to do that, but we believe we should reaffirm the city's commitment to that. It's a part of our recommendations to the new, the new council, once it takes, takes our seats in January, we'll be to pass a resolution to be effective, just saying City Nelsonville will honor all of its debts and obligations. That means, you know, the contracts we have are still in force, money we owe, ones we have, we're still not paying. So that was the resolve that meeting, and I appreciate the members of city staff who were able to come and attend that. We talked a little more about the December problem, which I will talk about a little bit later in my recommendations portion. And we also talked about the timeline that we wanna set for ourselves in terms of getting a finalized report to you all. The way we envision that report taking, taking shape would be, we're gonna kind of have two segments of it. One being things that this body here could do as soon as we have that legislation drafted, that would, you know, mitigate some of the risks associated with the transition. And obviously, when we come up with the same, I'm gonna wait till the end of the year, or until the report is finished to give it to you all. You know, time is of the essence, so whenever we have an idea, we're gonna come and present it to you guys and if you do what you will with it. But the other side of that is going to be action for the new statutory council to take. Most of it, I'm gonna recommend, you know, 1201 on New Year's Day, right? I think that the risk is large enough that we should have a midnight council meeting and pass some legislation that's essential to protect the city and help it keep operating. We're gonna try to get that done this summer. I would like to have a preliminary report ready for you all on the first meeting in August. The only meeting in August that is. Let you all take a look at it, pass my ideas around on it, and then we can have a finalized plan ready by that first meeting in September.
If, if, if if we weren't changing the statutory and we were going through an election in November, that council would take its seat in December.
Yes, first Monday in December.
The first meeting Monday in December. So, why couldn't that transition happen with the statutory? Is there a reason not? I, I don't know that.
I, I don't think I understand your question.
Well, if I do understand the question, I think the answer to it might be that issue 23 specified that the
Daniel first.
Law would be, yeah.
It was a question, it wasn't an argument.
I know that.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any more questions on that transition?
I have a question. So technically, the new council wouldn't be able to take their seats until January 1st, which then you would have to call a meeting at that point. You wouldn't be able to call prior to that, because they wouldn't be in their seat.
Twenty, twenty-four hours.
So it would be potentially, well, the first is a holiday. I mean, can you call it on the, I mean, if you could call it on the holiday. But then, so it would be on January 2nd then, would be the?
Yeah, although I suppose you could take, take the theory that it's the initial organizational meeting for which does setting up a new government that had not previously existed. Under that theory, could say the notice could technically be given the day before on Jan, or sorry, December 31st. Ordinarily, that's probably not a wise thing to do, but given the situation, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to throw a rope on-
Yeah, no, no, would we be able to find that?
The more, the safer answer would be wait till December 2nd, or sorry, January 2nd, but the problem there is, if you go 24 hours without some of this legislation, you're running risks that the police department might not be able to operate for 24 hours. We don't want that situation.
So, I mean, is there anywhere we could go to find that answer, just for clarity, just?
Well, I mean, the revised code does contemplate in certain situations when you're having that initial startup, being a little bit more relaxed, I want to be careful. Being a little bit more, maybe I shouldn't say lax, but a little bit more giving in terms of compliance with the rules. The safer, again, the problem is there are pros and cons just about with everything, and the problem is the cons just are bigger than ordinary. It's just it's a challenge because we don't quite easily fit into the boxes that the revised code explicitly anticipates for something like that. The revised code anticipates and explicitly contemplates a transition from a statutory village to a statutory city, and vice versa. There are special rules for that exact transition. But there's nothing explicitly saying, hey, if you are a charter municipality, we're going back, or the rules just doesn't come like that. So the question is, what's the best fit? And the point is, when you're asking, what's the best fit? Well, you know, if anyone's kind of in construction, you know, depends on the gap. And right now, the gap's kind of big.
So we're voting in November under the charter, correct? Rules of the charter. When it comes in, the way it stands. Unless we pass a different resolution, can we pass a resolution that says we can do both? Because the way it is right now, our charter does not allow the positions being voted on. It only votes council members. So how can we vote, vote people in for a statutory form of government when it doesn't exist? Because we, there's no guidelines from, from our charter government to statutory.
So my understanding, and I don't want to say, steal any of Mr. Horton's thunder, but my understanding is one of the recommendations of the issue 23 commission is to have at the, on the November ballot, two sets of ballots basically, one for charter council, which will only be serving the month of December of this year. And then secondly, the statutory council seats in other statutory offices that would take office January 1st. I think those, I don't think there's any rule that says you can't have both. I think you probably have to have both.
My only question is, is because our charter doesn't allow us to abolish the charter and go to statutory. So wouldn't that fall in the guidelines of us abolishing the charter?
Given the particular uncertainties, the answer no can't be ruled out. I mean, I just-
I, I don't, I don't mean to-
That's it, I understand something, because if we're running the charter and we don't, under the charter, we can't abolish the charter. By us going through and authorizing a vote on the statutory form of government, aren't we in effect going through and abolishing the charter by our, by our own, which we're not allowed to do?
That act by itself probably doesn't do that. But it certainly leaves open the door, as the courts said in their decisions regarding the issue 23. The fact, no matter where they left it, is council has the power to repeal issue 23, as strange as that sounds. That's where, that's where the courts left this.
So then theoretically, if we go through and we don't vote on both of them to do a statutory and a charter, then basically whoever gets elected this November is on the current, will be under the current administration, and they'd have to hold a special election after one January to get the people for that.
Well, the, the law already, issue 23 is the law. Issue 23 says that statutory folks are going to be elected in this year's general election. It will take off Sunday, January 1st. I don't think that, and this is my catchphrase this whole process, I am not an attorney, but my understanding of the law is, is it anything short of saying that we are repealing issue 23 from this council? It, it, the charter is going to be abolished either way. That's the only thing you can do to revert the charter being abolished. My job here is to make sure that issue 23 is implemented, you know, as seamlessly as possible with a little turbulence. So I'm not gonna speak on that side. Issue 23 says that folks are gonna be elected for the statutory form of government in November. They're gonna take off January 1st. I do not see, I'm just gonna reiterate it again, I do not see anything the council can do short of passing an ordinance repealing issue 23 at all that would be construed as you abolishing the charter on your own or deviating from what the current law is.
Taylor?
No, go ahead.
If in December, a member of this council is still here, could that person appoint ahead of time the people who have been voted in for the statutory government?
If there aren't enough, if there are any vacancies in December, then yes. Those can be filled by appointment, and those appointments, the appointees could certainly be people elected to start serving.
And then there would be a smooth transition from December into January?
As smooth as probably can be anticipated under this assumption.
Okay.
Good thinking.
Can I ask a question about the December issue?
Absolutely.
So I, I've been trying to wrap my head around the election of December terms down to the level of what candidates would put on their petitions. There's a spot where candidates would be expected to check a box for running for a full term or check a box for running for an unexpired term ending on a certain date. It does not seem to me that the December term would fall under either of those categories. It's neither a full term nor is it, nor is it an unexpired term, because that would be like a vacancy situation and not a term beginning sometime in the future after the election.
So
That's not a question, but-
I, I, my, my gut would say that they would be filing to run for a full term because let's say that this happened two years ago, that someone was appointed to fill a vacancy, that seat has to go to a special election, I mean, you know, I think that it depends on what kind of, what seat is actually being run for, because we have a few seats on this council that are partial terms, that, you know, you're not gonna have enough to run the fill out the remainder of. There's a couple that are full terms, so I think it just depends on what seat you're running for.
Okay. Okay.
And if, if it says December 1st to December 31st, that could be construed as a full term.
Or the unexpired term, or for the expired terms, yes. I, that's what my head initially went to as well. So if you're running, if, if there is a term here that was elected, you know, two or four years ago, that is now coming to its end, you know, in November, if you're running for one of those seats, that would be a full term, I believe.
So I have a question for the December issue. When would the Board of Elections need to be notified that this is gonna be placed on the ballot? With the December issue.
Petitions, I don't know the exact date, but it's typically, it's the second week of August, my apologies, for seats under the charter. So I'm-
Yeah, I'm not talking about the seats, I'm talking about the issue of the dates that that term would be, with the city.
Well, I, I would say you have to probably give them a little heads up before that August.
Yeah, I, I mean, technically, there's nothing, there's nothing right now to stop the Board of Elections, as far as we know, they're already planning on doing this anyway. Okay. They, there can't be a gap of government. That's just not what government-
That's just not what government is. Part of the reason why I think the, and again, I don't want to put words in the commission's mouth, my understanding is the commission is wanting to make sure that the public is also equally aware of what's going on. And so the council, considering of passing a resolution serves two purposes. One, just to make sure the Board of Elections is clear on the issue. We don't want them to accidentally, I'm not trying to blame them or whatever, but you know, we don't want them to back into a problem. And then number two, just make sure that the public's aware that, hey, if, you know, Mr. Jones is on the ballot, you have to, for both, the January and December council, you got to vote for both. Or, you know, another individual is running for two, you got to vote for them at both, just not, not just see the name, first time vote for them. That's only going to be good for one of the two.
One more?
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Because there could be one or two whose terms are expiring in November, who are, who have submitted petitions to be placed on the ballot in November, who may also be interested in serving for the December term. Those people will have already turned in petitions saying they were running for the full term. It doesn't, I can't imagine those people's petitions for the December term to be substantially different from what they already turned in. And I'm wondering if that might create confusion if they're voting elections.
I think that's, I don't have the expertise to speak on that.
That's fair. I just wanted to pose the question.
I would say that is between, that'd be between the candidates and the Board of Elections for sorting that out and communicating clearly on what, what is being sought.
Yeah.
One thing I will say, I don't know if this is what you're getting at, but the rules governing candidate petitions are pretty strict. Like you have to, you can't be off, you can't say, if you say, I'm running for council seat, term starting January 2nd, that, that's disqualifying. That will get you off the ballot. And so there is no interchange between, they have to be separate and distinct. So as confusing as it will be, or as perhaps, as much time as will be duplicated, if someone wants to run for both, they're going to have to circulate petitions for both. Not, I suppose they could do it at the same time, but they're going to have to circulate separate petitions. If they don't, they risk getting disqualified for all the races.
I think Mrs. Sonnick, and I could be mistaken, I understood Mrs. Sonnick is saying that she, if she stays on council, which her term is not up, but she could appoint, which wouldn't have to file a petition. Is that correct?
You don't have to file a petition for an appointment.
So I might be wrong, and I mean, I just, that's what I thought I might hear, been hearing her say.
Right. So, so if there's one person on council, that person can't pass legislation, that person can appoint a second person, and then those two people can appoint a third person, who can then appoint, three of them can appoint a fourth person, and then there's a quorum to do legislative business. Um, that's a good plan B, but I think plan A in our system of government is that there will be an election to fill the seats.
That, that was the commission's thinking and bringing that recommendation, because the charter is still in effect until January 1st. If issue 23 would never happen, these seats can still be up for election, which, again, issue 23 is the law, but it's not a full, it is not going full force until January 1st. We are in this weird spot where we're between these two worlds, right? And what Mr. Oba was saying, that's, the commission's thought was that this is the least, the first least bad option, because it is what we think the law demands. Without further questions on that point, I do have two recommendations here from the commission. One is explicitly related to the December issue, so I bring a couple more questions here. And the second, the second one kind of is caused by a December problem, but might span into the statutory council for a little bit of time. The first one is that obviously we were just discussing the difficulty of trying to get folks to fill those one months. Council, we believe that if those folks are not elected, then we are going to have a member of council likely to be able to appoint and have this be a functioning body, to be able to do business. The harder thing is, is the auditor and treasurer's offices. What do we do if we don't have anybody who seeks to run for those, no one is elected, we go one, two, three, four, a whole week, you know, one, two, three, four days, a whole week without having an auditor or treasurer, you know, managing the city's funds?
But you do have a minimum result round auditor.
Under the charter?
I'm sorry?
Under, under the charter? This, this is under the charter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I should have been more clear, I'm sorry. So this is talking about that one month in December. The commission thinks that it might be wise for council and the finance committee to start maybe pricing out the potential of the city retaining a third party to provide some of those services. And I put, I put in here note that this is last case, we can't find anybody who's a citizen to do this the traditional way. We're thinking if you could retain a CPA or some firm that would be able to, to provide both auditor and treasurer services for the city for that one month. And that might not be too onerous for those, for those firms, so it might not be all that much more money than it would be to have that payroll for that month.
So the treasurer, the auditors' situation is going to be earlier. It's going to be September. So for the charter, the city manager has the ability to appoint that position. So that, hopefully, the auditor position will be covered. It's really going to be.
For, for September as well? Because that does have to go back to.
I don't believe your term was up, Mr. Chappington. Was it up in the end of November?
I was reelected, I was sworn in December 1st of 23. So my next election would have been 27.
So we should be good through December, if you have points for the unexpired term.
And that would have to go to, that would not have to go to election in November.
Correct. So it would just be, should just be the treasurer.
Okay. Well, there's one more thing off the front list, right? So again, that's, we want to maintain operational capacity for the city for that month. That, it, it, like, like I was saying, it might not be too onerous on the cost side, because we do have staff who are working these things already. We might just need that additional oversight and trying to keep things moving, just to keep things above the approach. Second problem, like I said, caused by the December, or the second recommendation, caused by the December problem and spins into statutory council and statutory government, is the issue of the city budget. December is typically when council adopts a budget for the next calendar year. We've had around a couple ideas of how to get over that. One would be that this council could pass a three-month continuing budget of some kind. I'm going to leave that up to the experts in the room who have worked on the city budget before. You could do that to span us into the statutory government, collect that council, get their feet under them, and then get toward the earnest on continuing the budget for the rest of the year. You could adopt the, just copy and paste the 25 budget and, you know, add 4% to this item and this item. We typically see a year-over-year appropriation increase, but we just went to, they recommend finance committee get together and start thinking about how to, how to get that issue solved with just kind of those ideas as starting point. Happy to answer any questions on that, but I will say that two upcoming meetings I wanted to note, legal voters will be holding town hall for the wards discussion and getting the, I'll start on ground to those wards. That's going to be this Thursday, 29th, 6:00 PM at the library, 95 West Washington Street. And additionally, the advisory commission is going to be meeting again Thursday, June at 6:00 PM in this room.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Courtney? Thank you, sir. Committee discussions, I know quite a few committees met on, I don't have the data here, but we're going to start at the top of the list. The first committee that met was the utility. If we could receive a quick update on that meeting, Chairman?
Yeah. Utility.
I believe so. Yeah, I think, yeah.
13.
13.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. Well, I, I kept my mic.
All right, I'll help you out here a little bit. First thing on your agenda was the TTHM issue of the water plant?
That's it, yes. The water treatment plant. Yes, we talked about the, we had Jeff Trolley, the water treatment guy come in, and we also had the DLG, Mr. Betts, he came in and spoke with us. And the figures on the, the water treatment plant had come down because they made some changes in the depth of the well. The well was, they were suggesting that the depth of the well be kept lower, and then they find out later, the recommendation wasn't right, and that the depth should be raised of the well that they draw the water from, so that that level doesn't exist as much at a higher, or, or those THC doesn't exist at a higher level of the, of the well. So they've done that and the levels are coming down, where you get those, those cards in the mail about the water safety and the levels aren't, you know, out of, too far out of line, but you know you might want to do this or do that. So, so that was real encouraging, because he said, and he showed us that they're, they are coming down. And that's what we were supposed to be looking at. And then we spoke also about storm, storm sewers to Mr. Betts. And, and he, like Mr. Clement, had brought up, brought it up to me, he actually said that, you know, that could take years, and I think Mr. Holmes even said the same thing, years, to, to make those corrections with those storm sewers, which definitely needs to be done. But, so we're looking, he's going to look into that, Mr. Betts.
So concerning the TTHM issue, there's been a lot of misstatements about the drinking water. Some are very problematic statements, that the water's poison, not safe to drink. That's been dispelled, would you not say?
I would say so, very much so, very much so. I tell you, what was, what was encouraging to me is that Mr. Traw, Jeff Traw, he said that Kimberley has a dead spot.
It's a dead end line.
Dead end line, yeah, yeah.
Twenty houses.
And it doesn't, yeah, and it doesn't move, it stays stagnant there, correct?
Yes.
And so once it does finally get in the system and moves, it could have a buildup of those THC's in it. So I was really encouraged, you know? I, I don't drink city water that much.
It would take years upon years.
To kill you.
To be affected.
Yeah, I can drink it.
If the levels we were at, they were not very high.
Yeah. And they're coming down, that's what was encouraging.
Drastically.
Yeah, drastically, that's a good, that's a good.
And what it was, was Jeff had always had to keep the two flare wells low.
Right.
With these new systems we got, they, they air the water, the water has to be up, there was too much air in between the water and the air filters, and it wasn't able to take them out.
And, and Jason, just like, just like that, those cards that go out telling people about it, I think cards should go out and tell people the good part of it, too.
EPA makes us send those, and they have.
But can the city send something like that in your water bill?
Possibly.
With the little thing saying?
Twenty houses where, where the water was at, where the water was bad, there's only twenty houses.
But it has to go to the whole city.
But it has to go to everybody in the water system.
Yeah, I, I thought that was really encouraging. I did, I did. I was really happy with it.
Concerning that point, Mr. Flowers, I think it's important that the administration and this council keep the citizens informed of where we're at.
Yeah.
And not allow the misinformation to take hold and create the hysteria that was out there for a period of time.
Well, it's gossip.
As long as it doesn't come back.
But I mean, you know, gossip, 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 et cetera.
Well, facts are facts.
Well, I know, but facts are facts. But I really, I think, my mother told me, I said, Mom, I don't drink city water no matter where I am. My mother lived to be almost 99, and she says, I've drank that water since I've been alive. So, you know, it, it didn't do my mother any harm, you know?
Anything else on the utility committee?
Not that I can think of.
Okay. We'll move on to the park and rec committee. We could get an update from that.
It was pretty short, we just, pardon me, we just spoke about fencing down in Holyfield, pool rates, and then we had a roundtable discussion with Mr. Holmes, kind of filling him in. It was only my second time being committee chair, so I, he got brought up to speed as much as I had been there since then, with the flood out for the form of issues that we had to take care of down there day after day. But that's pretty much, that's a pretty decent update of what went on at the committee meeting, so.
All right, thank you. Next was the planning and development committee. We discussed the comprehensive plan. Mr. Holmes was in attendance, as well as Ms. Joseph Sol. Mr. Flowers was not. And so we discussed the comprehensive plan, and I believe the city manager will have some updates on that. We also discussed the HR policy that the city is sorely lacking. And then we had a roundtable discussion with Mr. Holmes, and also we had a citizen bring up signage coming off of the interstate into the city, just to highlight the city a little bit and potentially some businesses. And that was pretty much the discussion in that committee.
It was recommended that the citizen reach out to the Chamber of Commerce about that project, right?
Yes, thank you. Police and fire committee met. We could get an update from that committee.
Yep, we, we didn't have anything specific on our agenda. We did a roundtable to bring Mr. Holmes up to date. Chief Barber was not able to attend, Chief Barber was there, so we primarily talked about fire department updates that we had, things that we'd been working towards, grants, I believe, that they were receiving, applying for. But we just had just a general conversation about police and fire and where we were at that point, just trying to help Mr. Holmes get brought up to speed.
Thank you. Street committee met next. We could get an update from that committee.
Mr. Collins, he brought us up to date on a lot of the projects that we had going on. There were several questions. What? Oh, straight. I thought it was.
You got it, buddy. You, you keep going, you got it good.
That's my first mistake, you got it.
No problem, go for it.
But, and, but that was pretty much all that we did. I thought there's something else I forgot.
The other thing we discussed was going through the storm projects and getting a storm sewer, maybe looking into it, checking in. uh, checking in with O N D R, with their updates that they're doing, and the past work that they did coming down off the hill that, uh, from my, from my, uh, rec, I think it's re, or, rec, uh, position that we have, and I believe they've got another project going in now, and I don't know if we can tie into that project, or with city, or what we can do, but, uh, when we discuss about really looking into there on the end of Chestnut Street to get rid of the flooding before somebody comes in there and behind the planes and, uh, goes right at, you know, causes damage, so.
Have, did you guys say anything about striping that area down there?
Striping it for?
For cars to divide the lanes up? There's no middle stripe going down there, it's just all black?
Well, it's, it's black all the way down Chestnut Street.
I know.
And every other side, every other side street we have in town.
Have you ever talked about striping those streets?
No, not yet, why, why would we strike just that one and not the rest of the city?
Well, I'm talking about the rest of the city.
So that's something you want us to look into?
Yes, sir.
Is possibly striking the city?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
We can do that, but like I said, that, right now, uh, this, this is the first time it's been brought up, because none of our side streets within the city are striped.
I know Chestnut Street doesn't need striped, but I mean, like Poplar, it's not striped, there's no center line in Poplar Street.
There's none in Chestnut, Poplar, Washington, any of them.
Correct.
The only ones that are on there on the state highways that the state maintains.
It was a question.
Well, I'll, I'll bring it up to the next committee.
Thank you.
Okay, um, then I believe last, the finance committee met, we could have an update?
Yes, um, the finance committee met for an hour, um, so we have quite a bit of updates, um, for you all. Uh, we had a lengthy discussion with the auditor, um, first topic was the three mill replacement levy for general construction reconstruction, resurfacing and repair of streets, roads and bridges, um, we did, um, received the estimates from the county auditor, um, on the value and the funds generated from that replacement levy, um, so we will be considering resolution twenty-three forty-six later in this meeting um, to place that replacement levy on the ballot. Um, then we discussed the, um, USDA accounting requirement that Mr. Sappington brought up earlier this evening, um, with the closed out grant with unspent funds, um, we have, we will be discussing ordinance thirty dash twenty-five um, to transfer those funds to the newly created accounts. Um, then there was a small fire grant appropriation, where the Division of Fire received a grant from Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation for the purchase of equipment, and we will be considering, um, that appropriation in ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-five. Um, then there was the, the, a request from the Police Department for appropriations to reimburse them for a radio software update um, that was required by Motorola and paid for using our already appropriated funds, um, that will also be discussed or be considered, um, under ordinance thirty-one dash twenty-five tonight, um, and then, uh, we discussed the appropriation of five thousand dollars to the miscellaneous expenses line item in the general fund um, that will be discussed, uh, in further detail under ordinance, um, thirty-two dash twenty-five tonight. Um, then we considered, uh, the renewal of the health insurance, um, through Ohio's Small Grants Pool. There will be a five percent increase in shared cost premiums, um, which is low compared to the national average, that's between eight and nine percent. Uh, we will be considering that renewal under ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-five later tonight, um, and then we discussed, um, joining the Athens County Economic Development Council as an affiliate member, um, further discussion on that matter will be under, um, resolution twenty-three forty-seven, which we will discuss later tonight, um, and then we had a, uh, discussion with the city manager, um, who asked for an update on, um, applying for the overflow sewer grant, uh, which the uh, acting city manager was authorized to apply for earlier this year, uh, Mr. Holmes um, has not yet been brought up to speed on that effort, um, but he was attending a construction meeting later that week, that week, so we are looking forward to additional updates on that. Um, as was said earlier, um, we will not be reviewing the check report approval procedures um, tonight, but the city manager and auditor, um, are developing recommendations that they will continue to, um, to put forth to the, um, finance committee for consideration, um, and then finally, um, we had a note from the city attorney, um, to discuss the O R C A agreement, um, is this an appropriate time for us to ask for further information on that?
Yes, that's, so, um, the city is a member of, of O R C A, and as a member, um, there are membership fees assessed to each member. Last year, council had authorized, I think it was, um, if memory serves, I think it was ordinance eighty-six twenty-four, authorized payment of the city's membership fees in an amount equal to one dollar per resident. After that was, that ordinance was passed, well, uh, the ordinance required before payment that a invoice be submitted by O R C A to the city, after that, um, um, ordinance was passed, before any, um, invoice was submitted, O R C A came back to the city and said, hey, what about taking over our sewer line and the city paying for the sewer line into the O R C A facilities? And what if that's treated as in-kind contributions to the membership fund, frankly, that's, that in-kind contribution is much greater than the dollar per head, um, membership.
Right?
Correct, so council approved that and explicitly repealed is, uh, ordinance eighty-six twenty-four, so there is no authority currently, right now, for the city auditor to make any monetary payment for twenty-twenty-four membership fee. Well, I guess O R C A's, um, executive director contacted the city, um, she, was one, I guess it was her understanding that the arrangement would be, there'd be a cash payment for twenty-twenty-four, um, membership fee, but then twenty-twenty-five going forward would be the in-kind, I told her I'd have to talk to council, because right now, under current law, there's no authority to pay money, including for last year's fee. Um, I, my understanding had been the city had considered the in-kind contribution to cover both twenty-twenty-four and, uh, not just twenty-twenty-five in all of it, but.
Uh, was that ever in writing between, um, the executive director of, of O R C A and?
Um, there was email correspondence, I believe, between her and the executive, um, and the acting city manager, but I believe that was only along the lines of, here's, I, I mean, the fact of the matter is, I don't think the city even got an in, in fact, as far as I know, the city's still not got an invoice for it, I don't know if that's correct, that's, that's, I am not aware of an ordinance, or, sorry, an invoice for twenty-twenty-four, I could be incorrect about that, but the last that I had seen, there was.
Would you advise us to wait until we receive an invoice before we consider authorizing payment?
I think that would make some sense, because I think part of the problem was a confusion over what the amount that O R C A was claiming was due versus what the city had even authorized to begin with, so I, I think that makes sense. Um, I, I, I mean, I think, I think that.
Notify them that we are waiting for?
Sure, I, I can always send, I could send a, an email to them, and, and basically it would just be along the lines of, hey, um, council needs this additional information as it considers whether to change the law to authorize the twenty-twenty-four payment. That, that way they're just clear, it's not, excuse me, the invoice that gets paid, that there's, there's still a process here.
We can also ask Mr. Holmes to reach out to us, so.
What is the dollar figure on that twenty-twenty?
Five thousand.
Oh, is it five thousand?
Yeah.
Five thousand.
Maybe, maybe some dollars. Just to be real stupid about it, let me ask this question, what does O R C A do for five thousand dollars?
That, that question's worth more than five thousand dollars.
Sixty-four thousand dollars, right?
Um, I, I mean, I, I think that's one, Mr. Holmes, if I may.
I love this job, when I don't know, I just make up stuff. What it does for us and it gets us completed, the work of those, the way I understand it, is the Bailey Trail or that organization, am I correcting that, and, uh, there's gonna be a lot of tourism come here, and we wanna be part of the game. We don't wanna be left out.
And how do they, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt you, how do they, um, put us in their game?
Well, I'm not sure, cause I haven't been to a meeting, but my understanding, I think fifty-two miles of it has already been completed, and it's a total of eighty-eight miles, I've been trying to read up on it, but I think there's discussion about connecting that with the hot hocking bicycle trail, I think we're in a key position not to be a member of it. Uh, I think it would harm us way more than five thousand dollars to expand, but whatever plan they have and, and tourism, cause that's gonna be our mainstay here in, not just Nelsonville, but southeast Ohio, uh, tourism is, is, I won't say it's our best, best bread and butter, but it is an important element, and we need to be, we need to be on the board, we need to be participants, uh, and I would, I would strongly encourage the, the council, after I be, attend the meetings, I can give you a, a better update on exactly what we get.
That would be nice.
But I, I do think we, we deserve to be the table. Anything, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, on that's it.
If, if the council were to consider it tonight, Mr. Rowe, would it be sufficient if the council made a motion on the topic?
Yeah.
To, you know, for, for my office to take action, or would there need to be something more than that?
Uh, given the state of where the law is, I think, if there's going to be a payment, there's going to need to be ordinance, but.
I think we then have an invoice.
Right.
So then we, we make up resolution after the invoice goes in, correct, or no ordinance?
Right, if that's what, if that's what council's wanting to address.
Yeah, be after the invoice comes in.
Right, if, if, if ordinance eighty-six twenty-four had not been explicitly repealed, I think just a simple motion today would have been sufficient to possibly resolve everything, it's just, that's not what happened. Uh, I, I mean, ordinance eighty-six twenty-four was repealed, so there's no authority.
So, so we need to recharge one, sometime an ordinance so we can?
Yes.
Is, is, is Mr. Holmes gonna get to go to the meeting before we pay the money, or, and see what? I mean, are you going to get to go and, and find out what this organization?
I'm planning on going to the next meeting.
Okay, and then you can, you can tell?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I will reach out and get, get an invoice.
Thank you, do you know when the next meeting is?
I will admit it.
All right.
No, no, I won't, I don't have my phone.
Well, while he finds that out, um, I just wanna conclude, um, my review of the finance committee meeting by saying we continue our discussion, um, identifying potential, um, opportunities and other funding opportunities for the city, so that is ongoing. You missed by anything yet?
Looking as fast as I can.
I'm sorry, I should've talked slower.
For, for when it was Thursday, or Thursday?
We've got three people running down.
Yeah.
June sixth.
June sixth?
June sixth.
June sixth, okay, okay.
All right, um, that was all the committees that met, the judiciary committee did not meet that night. All right, department updates, uh, I'm not sure whose department it is this morning. Chief Barber, thank you.
All right, uh, well, this is the last update, um, again, we're still partnering with Red Cross, we're snorkeling arm installed in the city of Nelsonville, and then this is, uh, a repeat, uh, but this is an ongoing project. Again, these detectors must be installed by fire department personnel, we actually make an assessment of the home and determine where the detector needs to be placed, place that, they'll pay for it, it's appropriate with Red Cross, that's an admin program. Once the school detectors that we have in stock are depleted, we get more from Red Cross and we begin the process. Um, grants I, that are in progress right now, are processed, we still have the R C I grant that's still out there right now for medical supplies and statistics. The pet green, it was awarded, uh, that was a small grant, I believe, nine hundred cent a kilo, okay? Um, so that's awarded, we're just waiting on preparation of funds for that one. Um, joint training, in addition to internship training, we also have, uh, joint training with different departments. On this coming Saturday, well, the Saturday, the thirty-first, we'll be partnering with, expecting live fire training with Chillicothe B A Fire Department in Chillicothe on acquired structures, so we'll have members participating with other departments in the Ross County area.
Over there?
Live fire training, yes. Uh, storm response, that's a big one, so, the night of the sixteenth to the seventeenth, we had a cool front that came in, impacted our area, and we, our crew responded to approximately eighteen separate calls, mercy calls, most of these calls ended up in the R department at exactly the same time. We had crew members out until almost noon on Saturday, we were still clearing mercy calls the next day. We actually had the utility department out with the equipment by McDonald's clearing some debris out of the road, and cutting a tree with us. We had one, and that same night, we had a tree that actually crushed the roof of an occupied home, nobody was injured, but we never knew if fire was to be any injuries that night during the school at all. Mutual aid given, uh, since the last update, we've had quite a few structured fire calls and, and mercy calls from other departments. On the thirteenth, we had, uh, mutual aid with council bunker fire department, obstruction fire on Pinker River. Seventeenth, we provided mutual aid to Gloucester Fire Department on, uh, structure fires. Uh, the seventeenth, we, on one of the, it was another fire with Gloucester, we actually had a Gloucester firefighter that was tragically injured on a fire, it was air drifted out.
Is he okay?
Yeah, we just escorted him home today, he, he is recuperating now. So on the seventeenth, during this fire, we're already a box alarm response with Murray City on structure fires. Due to the nature of the injury and, uh, the call volume that's impacting that area right now, we're actually priority of response now for Murray City on emergency calls in their coverage area. On, on the eighteenth, provided mutual aid for a structure fire in Gloucester in Murray City. Uh, the nineteenth, we provided mutual aid for another structure fire call from Gloucester and Murray City. On the twenty-third, we provided mutual aid on Pinker Street, and this was actually a medical call in Murray City, so we're at U N S crew one. My community R, the third, uh, crew members taught fire education, uh, early childhood fire safety expo at the Hockenfelder Intended to. On the fourteenth, myself and on-duty crew taught fire center, fire signature classes to the residential center staff. And tomorrow, we're teaching fire signature classes to the remaining staff members of the residential. And tomorrow, we're teaching fire signature classes to the remaining staff members for the residential center. And today, we asked for it. We helped ask for that Gloucester firefighter back home in the hospital. He's still today. And Hurricane Hill relief is just the same update from last update that I gave. We're still collecting more weather items to make another round for the week. I mean, Hurricane Hill and relief efforts and I'm gonna go ahead and.
Uh, Perry, when you're doing the uh fires or the smoke alarms, do do you just do the smoke alarm or can you assess anything that might be, cause that to go off? I mean, uh, can you look at a structure and say, you know, we've got some fire hazardous material here or?
If it, how do I ask me that? My opinion on something like that.
So in other words, you don't go in to inspect the house, you're just going to put the alarm in?
That'd be correct. We do assessments of the high and sports.
Would that not be, uh, would that not be prudent to 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 find out if you could do an assessment to maybe not have a fire occur?
Um, we do prevention and education to the public. Anybody can call in and ask me.
But going into somebody's house who asks you to come in and put a smoke alarm?
We don't do inspections on residential, I would say.
And and one more thing, uh, you, I see you make a lot of runs Murray City and Gloucester, or you have. What's the time on that? What, how long? It it's gotta take you what, fifteen minutes to get to Gloucester?
Uh, it takes a little longer to get to Gloucester, not 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 quite as much to get to uh Murray City.
Right.
Again, we're dealing with um voluntary apartments as well, so a lot of times our response.
Is that part of your box to go to Murray City?
Our box is, yeah, Murray City is on.
Gloucester.
Gloucester's not, Gloucester's just an automatic, but it's just a mutual aid contract with the.
They come from.
Yeah. That's counting, it's counting way mutual aid, we've told.
I want to congratulate you on all the things that you've done here on this paper. This is fantastic. To be able to look at it and know what you've done.
Oh, well, Memorial Day, but thank you. We also participated in Memorial Day as a member of the public as well. Yes, thank you.
Very nice, Chief.
Chief, I have a question. I I noticed there's some fire hydrants that are bagged. Are those out of commission? What's the status of those?
So we have, there's a couple hydrants in the city. We have hydrants that we consider out of service. If we know that we open up, we're gonna break the stem or it leaks and has another issue. And there's every hydrant in the city is actually operational. We only have maybe two.
Yeah, I seen the one on.
It's in the place in the project.
Okay.
So, uh, yeah, we're becoming, there's a reason why hydrants are strategically placed. There's one that goes on residential tree and that's why.
Four hundred feet, is it? Is that the length of the?
Four hundred foot is a, is a, is a standard.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why we're not repairing this, replacing this, having a more?
That that one is slated for on a future project, so it's.
Is there only two?
There's.
We've replaced.
We we were at a point where we didn't have any, so.
Yeah, we replaced like three in the last month, yeah.
In the last month, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's it's nothing like it used to be when I was trying to get hydrants replaced, but the apartments are looking, well, they have been looking very well together with the water supply system and it's definitely, there's nothing on the supply system right now that gives me any type of concern at all.
We've also added multiple hydrants to this system.
Added?
Added hydrants to the system that we had. So we had a number of hydrants and now that number's larger.
Oh, that's good.
Any other questions for Chief Barber?
Yes, um, that's about the path grant. Um, finance committee is going to discuss the appropriation, um, bringing that to council. I just wanted to know if we are working against any deadlines, if there's any need for urgency, or if I can just wait until next week's um finance committee meeting and then the following week's city council.
At this point, I don't know if we can.
Okay.
I mean, that's the best answer I can do. Go, yeah, you know, they're waiting on payment, so.
Oh.
Once uh, once we get that money, we can actually order that equipment.
Okay.
I I can't spend money that I don't have, so I don't like that. I like to make sure the money is appropriated before we.
Is this new equipment or replacement, replacement?
Uh, that was for fire attack, hose draft, water things. That's all new stuff. That's just new tool that we use on a daily basis for structural fires.
But not replacing those things?
Uh, no.
It's adding to it, right?
Basically, yes. It's not, there's nothing on that list right there that's Henry right now that that we, you know, that we don't have.
Gotcha.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Chief Barber.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, uh, long director report.
Great. I've got a couple of things. I I wouldn't do a report tonight because Mr. Holmes is going to take care of everything. Yeah, I'm just here for questions and he says, there's two things. On Tuesday the thirteenth, we have a leak right down here. It was the largest leak we've had since I've been here five years. It was not a good leak. I want to give a shout out to all the utility guys for what they did, the water office, for all the phone calls they took and to all the citizens because it was on a citywide board of work. Second, that was the pool, Eric Parsley replaced speakers down there. The city bought speakers, Eric replaced them. Couple of the old speakers, he had bought parts to fix the old speakers. He done it all in his time, refused to get paid. I wanted to send the thanks out to him. He wanted to do it all in his mom's name.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. All right, uh, law directors report, Mr. Rowe.
I think we've covered um and one um for most of the um items I had. I have a um public records uh litigation problem I can discuss. But basically, um, individual uh requested my private attorney email associated with one of my legal, one of my legal representations in litigation. Uh, I cannot uh provide those emails. Um, the law doesn't allow that. Um, because that individual has filed suit against both me by name and the city. Um, I've already reached out to the Remington Law Firm to provide uh representation for that. They're pretty confident that uh the case would be dismissed. The guy's filing, well, in fact, just today, he filed four new lawsuits against various attorneys around the state. Basically suing private attorney. Um, it's without merit, but um we can, we can, I can discuss more details at that decision. But um, that's probably the only other thing that I have. I mean, the the base, the basic principle is I cannot provide those emails. Counsel, the privileged, uh, counsel hasn't waived privilege, so I can't disclose them. I'm precise, asking for um my private emails on my law firm email account is just so that's where um that stands. Um, just want to thank Mr. Holmes for working through on a lot of things, for getting um the uh phase three water uh loan papers signed and off to DLZ, so that's, that's good. We um have those um in place. That should be, that was all previously authorized, I believe, by ordinance fifteen dash twenty-five. Um, so Mr. Holmes has full authority to go ahead, return those executed documents to DLZ, so we're. Just want to thank the issue twenty-three commissions for their, their hard work. Um, and I see there's a representative of the state, Ohio legal and voters, so again, I want to just thank them for their work and put on the series of town halls of the world map issue. I did get uh correspondence from the uh Board of Elections Attorney. The Board of Elections has received a uh petition for someone who wants to run for the third ward seat in November. Um, I'm just requesting clarification that in fact, there is no world map currently in place. I sent him a letter earlier today to that effect, and I told him, once we have um the final, once the city receives the final proposal from the state, the voters, and the PRC, the council can consider that map at that time, but until that proposal is before, there's nothing that the city can do. Other than just recognize there is no current world map for the city. Um, so I've been working on that and that just some other um items. Push out the door, so I just want to thank Mr. Barber.
Uh, any questions for Mr. Rowe?
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, moving on to ordinances, we have one for second reading, uh, ordinance twenty-nine twenty-five.
Ordinance stating the portion of the alleyway in Lawton's North Village Division. Whereas Deborah Jones, Jessica, Timothy C, and Elizabeth W. Watkins, Guy Kelsey, Pierre, Scott, and Angela S. McDonald have participated in the city of Nelsonville pursuant to a higher revise code seven twenty-three point zero four to partially vacate the alleyway in Blossom North Sylonia Division. Whereas planning and development to the of Nelsonville, Nelsonville City Council has recommended the petition to partially vacate the alleyway to be granted by city council. Now therefore, we are named by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's followers. While petitions pursuant to a higher revise code seven twenty-three point zero four by Deborah and Caroline, Jessica, Timothy C., and Elizabeth W. Watkins, Guy Kelsey, Pierre, and Scott, and Angela S. McDonald, all being all the property owners of lots adjoining the portion of the alleyway in Blossom North Sylonia Division to be vacated. To vacate, partially vacate the alley in Blossom North Sylonia Division. A copy of the description of the vacated alleyway is attached here too and incorporated herein by reference and petition is hereby approved. And the portion of the alleyway to be vacated is hereby vacated. The city reserves a utility easement over a portion of the alleyway vacated for maintenance and installation of utilities. This one that shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Fully annexed by council on second reading the twenty-seventh day of May, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt, the. Any citizens comment? Council discussion? Uh, what called it all?
Flowers? Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Joe DeSonnell?
Yes.
Ordinance for first reading, uh, thirty twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it.
I will introduce it.
An ordinance establishing a debt service reserve fund and a short-lived asset fund for the city of Nelsonville Sewer Plant and authorizing the transfer from Fundus Sewer Plant Project Fund. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has received unspent cash from the Rural Development Wastewater Grant of USD related to the city sewer plant project. Whereas the grant agreement stipulates that said unspent funds must be transferred to a debt service reserve fund and a short-lived assets fund to be used exclusively for the operation, maintenance, and debt obligations of the sewer plant. Whereas the finance committee recommends council establish the debt service reserve fund and the short-lived assets fund to be used exclusively for the maintenance, operation, and debt obligations of the sewer plant. Whereas the city council finds it necessary and in the public interest to establish these two funds and authorize the appropriate transfers. Now therefore, we are named by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's followers. There are hereby created the following fund. A debt service reserve fund sewer plant, which shall be used solely for the purpose of servicing debt related to the sewer, to the sewer plant in accordance with the applicable financing and grant agreement. A short-lived assets fund sewer plant, which shall be used exclusively for the replacement or rehabilitation of short-lived assets of the sewer plant, as defined in accordance with the asset management plan and or the terms of the originating grant. The city auditors hereby authorized and directed to transfer the unspent grant cash balance from the sewer plant project fund into the funds created in section one in accordance with the allocation requirements of the grant closeout documentation. Funds established under this ordinance shall be maintained as separate and restricted accounts with interest earned to be retained within each respective fund. City council hereby find that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting of the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Fully annexed by council on second reading the ninth day of June, two thousand twenty-five.
And that's the first reading on that ordinance.
I just got one question for the auditor on that. Didn't you say that the interest off that would go into the general account?
That was also my question.
Thought somebody might, I actually started to raise my hand and then nobody was looking and I thought, well, yeah, the the final draft I thought was gonna involve section. What section was that? Sorry, section three. I thought it wouldn't include that section, um, but it's up to the council on the end of, if that's your wishes.
But, uh, okay, are, can we put that into the general fund or do we have to make it the restrictive account?
Uh, my understanding is uh the best practice is all interest would go to the general fund, yes.
So the simplest way to do it would just be a simple motion to amend to strike that language and then we can proceed, council can proceed with the second reading and the next meeting without that language.
I move to strike um the language in section three saying with interest earned to be retained within each respective fund.
I'll second that.
Am I Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Soundbong?
Yes.
Mr. Thong?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Do we need to change the language then or do we?
I I think just with striking that language, nothing else needs to be done, which is the call to the favor general policy.
So at the beginning of the next ordinance, we get on the second reading, right?
So I'll just take that.
I have another question about the, um, I received feedback from you on this draft um saying that, um, let's say, you, Mr. Saffington, for those who can't see him, um, saying that you will need authorization to request creation of these funds from the AOS office, which you speak to that?
Yeah, um, fortunately, so yes, generally, cool, let me take a step back. The city, in my experience, both on council and on the board, has never requested permission to create new funds. I was let, I was notified in our most recent audit that that was a requirement for the state auditor's office to request permission for new funds. Um, I talked with them today, actually technically, since it was an email chain, Mr. Rowe and I talked with them today. And they let me know that because it was in the grant documentation, um, they would not need to get their blessing or whatever.
Okay.
So we're good on this one, but since I'm at like, again, I'm gonna say this probably a lot in the coming months with just ninety some days left, um, it's good, good for everybody to know that um fund creation usually needs the state auditor's approval.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, any other discussion on this? All right, ordinance thirty-one twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it, however it is it.
And ordinance pending the two thousand twenty-five appropriations ordinance. Whereas the twenty twenty-five appropriations need to be amended. Whereas appropriations of five thousand dollars to number one hundred general fund line item one zero zero dash one zero zero dash two one three zero zero. It's necessary to reimburse the police fund for a radio software update required by Vodavola, which is already appropriated fund. Whereas appropriations of six thousand two hundred dollars to number one hundred general fund. Whereas appropriations of six thousand two hundred dollars to number one hundred general fund line item one zero zero dash two zero zero dash four zero zero one zero is necessary for the purchase of equipment using a matching Ohio Bureau of Work compensation grant. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's followers. Twenty twenty-five appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following fund. Appropriations in the sum of five thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund number one hundred to line item one zero zero dash one zero zero dash two one three zero zero. Appropriations in the sum of six thousand two hundred dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund number one hundred to line item one zero zero dash two zero zero dash four zero zero one zero. This sum representing grant funds received from the city by a matching Ohio Bureau of Work compensation grant, which grant requires a local funding match and also prohibits supplanting, meaning that grant funds may not be used to replace funding already funded for a program or service, but must instead be used to support or expand existing efforts. Total appropriated balance is decreased by said amount. The total appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by said amount. The city auditor is hereby authorized to submit changes to the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption pursuant to section four point one one of the Nelsonville City Charter, as this ordinance provides for appropriated current expenses. Will enacted by council on second reading the ninth day of June, two thousand twenty-five.
This is the first reading, is there any council discussion?
Question, um, uh, my printed draft here, um, says in both the, um, whereas clause for the general fund, um, for the, uh, police, or sorry, the, the fire department, um, number one hundred, I heard you say number two hundred, that seems to be correct, given the line item number, um.
You mean the second one?
This, yeah, the second one, both at the top and in section one below, one B below.
Yes, one zero zero dash two zero zero.
Okay, yep, yeah, and then it, but, um, on, on, on your copy, does it say number two hundred general fund line item? Cause on mine it says number one hundred general fund line item.
Mm-hmm, that's, that's correct, number one hundred line item.
So.
It's where the money's coming from.
It says to number one hundred, not from one hun, number one hundred on.
Two line items.
Oh, yeah, two, yeah, two line item, yeah, because both of those are in the general fund, they're both one hundreds.
But is one hundred dash one hundred dash two one three zero zero and one hundred dash two hundred dash four zero zero one zero both referred to as number one hundred? Oh, so number one hundred refers to the general fund?
Correct.
I'm so sorry. Took me a while to figure.
You're all right. Okay, uh, ordinance thirty-two twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it.
An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-five appropriations ordinance. Whereas the city of Nelsonville maintains a line item for miscellaneous expenses within its general fund for the payment of costs associated with minor unexpected purchases, which is line item one zero zero dash six two five dash four one 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 two. Whereas this line item was approximately eighty percent extended as of May, twenty twenty-five. Whereas the city auditor has requested that five thousand dollars be appropriated to line item one zero zero dash six two five dash four one 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 two, who ensures sufficient funding for the remainder of the fiscal year. Whereas Finance Committee has received the auditor's request and recommends the request to council. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's followers. The twenty twenty-five appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following fund. Appropriations in the sum of five thousand dollars from the unappropriated balance of the general fund number one hundred to line item one zero zero dash six two five dash four one 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 two. The total unappropriated balance is decreased by said amount. The total appropriations in each respective fund mentioned above are increased by said amount. The city auditor is hereby authorized to submit changes to the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Accordingly, pursuant to section four point one one of Nelsonville City Charter, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect immediately as this ordinance provides for appropriations for current expenses. Will enacted by council on second reading the ninth day of June, two thousand twenty-five.
This is the first reading, uh, is there any council discussion?
What's the, uh, unexpected purchase? It's not a single purchase, we use that line item, um, the one that came to mind in the finance meeting, still stuck in my head, that it's, we use that line item for pest control, um, among other miscellaneous expenditures. But just, uh, random things that aren't big enough to have their own line, um, that is needed around, uh, city, the city building.
But there's, there's a invoice follow-up on that, that line item, right?
There's not currently an invoice waiting, uh, for this appropriation, if that's what you mean. It was just more so to, to provide funds for the rest of.
But I mean, when the money's spent, but I mean, not, not going in, but when the money's spent, there's an invoice for, for the spending of that.
Oh, yes, okay.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Yeah, 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 thank you.
Yes. Ordinance thirty-three twenty-five, if someone would like to introduce it. I'll introduce it.
An ordinance authorizing the city to renew the Ohio Small Groups School and to approve a premium rate increase in the amount of up to five percent in inspiring an emergency. Whereas it's necessary for the city to sign a rate increase of renewal agreement for health insurance for the city of Nelsonville with the Ohio Small Groups School. Whereas council finds this is a routine and annual renewal for the agreement for another year. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed the proposed increase in the amount of premium and council finds that an increase in the premium rate of five percent is appropriate and necessary and is in line with the increase in renewal rates in Ohio other regions. Whereas council desires to authorize an increase in the premium rate of up to five percent. Whereas council finds that it is in the best interest of the city to continue offering health insurance coverage through the Ohio Small Groups School for the city's qualifying employees. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's followers. City manager and auditor are hereby authorized and directed to take all actions reasonably necessary to renew the city of Nelsonville's health insurance coverage through the Ohio Small Groups School, including, but not limited to, signing a renewal agreement for health insurance with the Ohio Small Groups School and increased premium rate of up to five percent. City manager and auditor are hereby directed to take the actions specified in section one at such time as to ensure the city's health insurance coverage for its employees continues without interruption through the, through plan here beginning June, two thousand twenty-five. The increased premium rate of up to five percent shall be shared between the city and qualifying employees in accordance with the city's current cost-sharing policy. The city auditor is hereby instructed to report and provide to council a fully signed copy of the renewal agreement once it is available. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of council and other committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable le, legal requirements. By members of council voting to dispense with the two reasons of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point one five and Nelsonville City Charter, section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article Four, section four point zero nine through four point one one of the Nelsonville City Charter as an emergency in the operation of the city government. As the city needs to ensure health insurance benefits in line with industry standard practices continues for the city employees without interruption and it is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals, and welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Will enacted by council on first reading the twenty-seventh of May, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, uh, motion to suspend the rules, salute, second. Uh, council discussion on suspension? Roll call on suspension of the rules.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Yes.
Flowers? Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. Motion to adopt. Uh, any citizens' comments? Council discussion? For caller roll?
Yes.
Mr. Man?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes. Ordinance thirty-three twenty-five passes. Resolution, uh, twenty-three forty-four, someone would like to introduce it. Or introduce it.
A resolution ratifying a previously authorized city manager contract. Whereas Nelsonville City Council met in a duly noted special meeting on April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas at the April thirtieth special meeting, council adopted resolution twenty-three forty-one, authorize the city to enter into a city manager contract with Mr. Brad Holmes to serve as city manager effective May first, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the final negotiated city manager contract was reported to council on April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the city entered into the city manager contract with the council duly adopted authorization. Now therefore be resolved that the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio's followers. Council hereby finds the city manager contract entered into by the city with Mr. Brad Holmes on May first, two thousand twenty-five was duly authorized by resolution twenty-three forty-one. Accordingly, council hereby ratifies the city manager contract attached here to as exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference for all purposes. City council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law. Will adopted by council on first reading the twenty-seventh day of May, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion to adopt. Salute, second. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion? For caller roll?
Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Before I say anything about this, uh, I would like to, uh, like to say that, uh, this contract is a seven-month contract. And, uh, nothing against Mr. Holmes, but to get a five-week vacation, I find it very, uh, very disturbing and my condolences to you also. So in, in that case, I'll have to say no in the convention.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Well, first off, once we call for a roll, if you have a question, you should ask it under council discussion in the future.
So are you saying I can't vote now?
No, Mr. Flowers, that is not what I'm saying.
Okay.
So what I'm going to say is, have you seen the contract?
Yes, I have.
Okay, so obviously you were not in the room during the discussion as you were absent from that meeting, correct?
Mr. Clement, why can't I just vote the way I wanted to vote with?
Well, you should, we should have had this discussion under council discussion. We're now, I'm asking a question. So we're gonna discuss your point.
So can I just vote no?
I guess we're all trying to figure out what's so wrong with him having the five weeks vacation that he was gonna have. Then he do, he was gonna have when he came in.
Hang on, man.
He's a private citizen with plans who's coming in to help us. So we accepted him as he was and didn't ask him to change for us.
But his pay was prorated, um, to account for the actual number of weeks for, until the end of the year that he got.
Oh, okay, hold on, one, one moment, I have the floor, thank you. So the new mayor-form of government takes place in twenty twenty-six. Leading up to, Mr. Flowers, I have the floor, thank you. Leading up to that point, I'm sure that people coming in to council administration and that type of thing will have vacations planned for that time period when they take office, such as Mr. Holmes has for this contract. So it was negotiated, it was discussed and accepted. And that's where I'm at with that.
I mean, I just.
Yes, Mr. Rowe.
Um, I, so I, I know the city and perhaps some, um, commendation should be directed to Mr. Tolliver for the way he, uh, negotiated this with the city. He achieved budgetary savings of twenty-one thousand dollars for the city. On the, that's even before the prorated nature of the salary come, came into effect, that's just strictly but budget. Mr. Holmes's annualized salary is twenty-one thousand dollars less than the previous salary manager. That's, I think, the ci, the city and Mr. Tolliver to be commended with, with that. The bargain for exchange for that reduction in, in salary is the vacation, the, um, increased vacation time, so with, with any, I'm sorry. Oh, no, no, go ahead, go ahead.
No, um, Mr. Rowe, so what I'm, what I'm hearing you say is that, um, he's being paid fifty-nine thousand dollars.
He would be paid, that's the annualized salary.
Right.
He will, he'll.
For the seven months, he's being paid fifty-nine thousand dollars.
No, no, he'll wind up being paid more like forty thousand dollars.
Well, I read in the contract it said fifty-nine.
But it's, it's.
If he were working for an entire year, it would be fifty-nine.
So we, it would be fifty-nine if he started working January first, but he started working May first. So the way that mapped, so that's basically, he's only going to be paid for two-thirds of a year, so it's two-thirds of fifty-nine thousand dollars, approximately forty thousand dollars.
And I've never heard such thing.
You've never agreed for reading a contract? I've never heard of what, what I just heard there.
We're, we're in the middle of the vote, can we finish the vote, please?
Yes.
And that way the next, whatever it is, is, we have, we have a discussion later on. Vote should be taken first. The point of order, Mr. Flowers, that Mr. Clement was trying to make is when he asked if there was any council discussion on it, that is when you should have brought up your concern, not while the vote was going off.
I appreciate that and my apologies for that. But I also wanted to preface my vote by telling Mr. Holmes that I, there was nothing against him being hired. I just didn't agree with the way the contract was set. That's all I wanted to do is preface my vote.
And that's one. Okay, one, one last thing before we take a, a leave final vote. Um, Mr. Holmes, who also volunteers for the Red Cross, has agreed with Red Cross to waive his commitment for the rest of the year, am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I heard that when we first talked to you, appreciate that.
Please finish the roll call.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Uh, resolution twenty-three forty-four passes. Resolution twenty-three forty-five, if someone would like to introduce it, I will introduce it.
A resolution reaffirming the city's longstanding policy that city funds may only be spent for public purpose. Whereas Ohio and Nelsonville law require that any expenditure of city funds be spent only for a public purpose and that any expenditure of city funds other than for a public purpose is unlawful. Whereas it has long been the city's policy that any expenditure of city funds be spent only for a public person and that any expenditures of city funds other than for a public person, purpose is unlawful. Whereas council wishes to reaffirm the city's longstanding policy. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The county hereby reaffirms the city's longstanding policy that any expenditure of city funds be spent only for a public purpose and that any expenditure of city funds other than for a public purpose is unlawful. Council hereby declares any deviation or change from this longstanding policy shall be unlawful. The county hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading the twenty seventh day of May, two thousand twenty five.
Okay, uh, motion to adopt. So move. So I can. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion?
What is this public purpose?
Uh, Mr. Holmes, could you answer, or Mr. Rob?
So, so the city, the city's money is the taxpayer's money.
Right.
That means, under Ohio law, taxpayer money can only be spent to benefit the public, it can't be spent to benefit only a particular private entity. In other words, you can't, um, you, you can't just write a check to Microsoft just because you want to make Bill Gates feel good, or you want to make Bill Gates richer. That's not public purpose, that's a private purpose, that's an easy example, of course, but, um, this resolution's not changing anything, is my understanding, I believe, um, it's always been the city's policy that it has to comply with the law and only spend for public purp- that doesn't mean a private individual can't benefit from it, like, all the employees obviously are paid, but they're paid to do the public work, they're not paid to go to, uh, one individual's house and rent their leads for them. That would be a private purpose, that, so you're not allowed to pay a public employee to do that private work.
Would that have anything to do with like, uh, like, uh, like Tunnel to Towers, or, or, or spending money like?
No, because what, what's?
I mean, we could donate money.
Right.
Okay, that's, that's my.
Right, no, it's a good question, 'cause, 'cause the, that's even for public purpose, because what it's trying to do is raise awareness by the city for supporting first responders, of whom part of the city's public purpose is providing first responders.
And then like sometimes we give money to the, uh, baseball?
Right. Yeah.
That's, that's public.
That would be, because what you're trying to do is.
All right, yeah, I got, yeah, I got, thank you, thank you very much.
Yep. The other council discussion. For call or roll?
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes. Resolution twenty three forty five passes. Uh, Resolution twenty three forty six. Of this.
Thank you.
Cue.
A resolution to proceed with placing on the ballot at the November fourth, two thousand twenty five general election. Reusing replacement levy for general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of street roads and bridges. Higher vice project of five seven zero five point one nine G as a replacement levy. Whereas by Resolution twenty three thirty eight, duly adopted by council, the council requests the Athens County Auditor to certify the amount of revenue generated by a three mil replacement levy for general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges, which levy is due to expire on December thirty first, two thousand twenty five. Whereas the amount of taxes which may be raised within the ten mil limitation will be insufficient to provide an adequate amount for the necessary requirements of the city of Nelsonville. Whereas the Athens County Auditor has certified the village for the requested replacement levy amounts to one hundred and five dollars for each one hundred thousand dollars of the county auditor's appraised value. Whereas the Athens County Auditor has also certified the property tax revenue that will be produced by the stated village, assuming the tax value of the subdivision remains constant throughout the life of the levy is calculated to be one hundred eighty-six thousand fifty-five dollars. Whereas council finds and determines that it is in the best interest of the city to cause the three mil replacement levy to be submitted to the voter of the city of Nelsonville. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Two-thirds of city council concurring, council finds that it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation for the benefit of the city of Nelsonville for the purpose of general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair street roads and bridges. Thus, the question of such tax levy shall be submitted to the electors of the city as the general election should be held on Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand twenty five. The levy shall be a rate not exceeding three mils for each one dollar valuation, which, which amounts to thirty cents for each one hundred dollars of valuation for a period of five years, commencing with the tax year twenty twenty five, first due in calendar year twenty twenty six. The clerk of council is hereby directed to submit a certified copy of the resolution to proceed of the taxing authority, which is attached here to as exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. The clerk shall take all due care to ensure submission of the resolution to proceed of the taxing authority as performed prior to August sixth, two thousand twenty five deadline, which is ninety days before the November fourth election. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all deliberations of the council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in this formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirement. This resolution shall be in full force at the earliest time permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading the twenty seventh day of May, two thousand twenty five.
Uh, motion to adopt. So move.
Second.
Any citizens' comments? Council discussion? For call or roll?
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
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 Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Resolution twenty three forty six passes. Uh, Resolution twenty three forty seven, if someone would like to introduce it.
I don't have a map of it, um. And as far as I understand, um, there was, I did make a mistake in the drafting of it where I listed the cash balance of the Economic Development Fund instead of the current appropriations, um, so it seems to me that there should be an ordinance written to appropriate the appro- appropriate, the appropriate amount of money to cover, um, the membership fees that will be referenced within that legislation.
We'll have a, we'll have a.
That's for the Athens County Economic Development Council.
So the money's already in the economic development fund.
It's not appropriated.
So there wouldn't need to be, it follow ordinance of appropriation, appropriation can't be by resolution. We do the, of resolution that authorizing the city to, uh, engage, yeah, even though, uh, council. If they invoice us, then we can do the ordinance to pay. Whatever council want that.
Correct.
How do you go find it?
It's gonna be a prorated amount, I assume.
If approved by the, the director.
Correct, and we don't know that yet.
I don't know that yet.
I read one that said twenty-two thousand dollars.
That's for the year.
Twenty-one, yeah, twenty-one, five hundred for, for a whole year.
For a full year, correct.
For a full year, correct. What was the eighty-seven thousand?
Um, that is the cash balance of the Economic Development Fund, but only nine thousand is currently appropriated.
Oh, that's what we have, eighty-seven thousand. Yeah. For that time.
In, in the fund, yeah.
So that hurt, no, no, that, that's fine, I can read it, I just need.
Like I said, only nine thousand dollars has been appropriated.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's why we need to follow.
Bring it on. I, I found it. You won't, I can, I can just read it, oh. Yes, that would be fun.
Yeah, Nancy introduced it.
Okay.
Resolution two three four five, a resolution authorizing the city of Nelsonville to join the Athens County Economic Development Council as an affiliate member and authorizing payment of membership fees from appropriated economic development funds. Whereas the Athens County Economic Development Council, A C E D C, exists to serve as a catalyst for quality jobs and progress in Athens County and throughout the region by creating a seamless network of economic development resources through partnerships with government, business, and nonprofit organizations. Whereas the city manager has recommended the city join A C E D C at the affiliate level so the city may participate in monthly meetings, obtain voting rights under special rules, and secure standing seat on the A C E D C's board of trustees. Whereas the finance committee also recommends the city join A C E D C. Whereas the membership fees for an affiliate level membership are twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars annually with the possibility of a prorated amount for the twenty twenty-five calendar year, pending approval by the A C E D C board of trustees. Whereas the city has appropriated approximately, with the current number, nine thousand uh, dollars for economic development, the funds of which are not sufficient to cover the city's affiliate level membership in A C E D C. Whereas it is in the best interest of the city to join the A C E D C to strengthen the city's role in regional development initiatives and expand access to economic development opportunities. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Council hereby authorizes the city to join the Athens County Economic Development Council, A C E D C, as an affiliate member. The city manager is hereby authorized and directed to take all actions reasonably necessary to enter into the membership, including signing any applicable membership agreement. The city manager shall represent the city on the A C E D C board of trustees. Accordingly, the city manager is hereby appointed to be the city's representative on the A C E D C board of trustees. The city auditor is authorized to expend funds, um, not to exceed an annualized sum of twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars to be prorated from the effective date of this resolution. The funds shall come from the city's appropriated economic development funds. City council hereby finds that this resolution was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This resolution shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading on the twenty-seventh day of May, two thousand twenty.
That's, uh, actual Resolution twenty-three forty seven.
Oh.
Based on the agenda?
Yes.
My mistake. Yeah, it's, it's written twenty-three forty-five on.
Okay, um, motion to adopt.
So move.
So I can. Any citizens' comments? Council discussion? I'm sorry.
Well, I take.
Go ahead.
I, I think this is an excellent move for Nelsonville to be making, because in order to be part of this hole that is really going to be developing, we need to be a part of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any council discussions?
I did notice, um, that the open meeting, um, wording was not updated from what I had originally sent to you, uh, where it just has that short blur instead of including that all deliberations of council and its committees were also taken, um, in open meetings. Um, should that change to be before we?
Uh, if you want the language in it, it would need to be.
Okay, um. I, I don't know how to word this, um, but I move to amend the language accordingly so that the entire open meeting is caused to flush out.
I'll second it. For call or roll? Roll and ready.
Um, Mr. Flowers?
No.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, so I'm motion to adopt, we, actually, do you want me to read the full?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and that all, um, deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements.
Thank you. Any other council discussion?
Uh, I'll motion that, uh, we we accept the amended version of the resolution.
Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson? Mr. Pack?
Yes.
Mr. Coman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonnen?
Yes.
Mr. Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Are we voting on the amendment?
Correct.
We already voted on amending it.
Yeah, we're voting on, accepting the amended resolution. Yep, we're, we're passing the resolution with the amended information.
Oh, no.
Um, Resolution twenty-three forty seven passes. Um, I do want to say one thing, as Mr. Holmes like to say, we need a seat at this table also.
Thank you. And if we can just have, make sure that we have a ordinance then, uh, for the next meetings with the appropriations.
Uh, city managers report, Mr. Holmes.
Or you are, or I want to, uh, introduce an ordinance on staffing inadvertently got overlooked.
Thank you.
At one of the committee meetings, and I think it may have been recreation or it may have been finance, um, a discussion was to add a third head lifeguard, and that had to come before council. So if you look on the purpose of this ordinance, it's to repeal ordinance twenty-six twenty-five, which is the staffing. But if you look on page two, you'll find section seven. It talks about seasonal staffing. A is one seasonal, uh, aquatic center directed at ten thousand five hundred per season, up to three head lifeguards. That's, it's a change from two to three. Then if you'll go down to section B, up to twelve seasonal staff to assist any department directed by the city manager and to serve between June first and August thirty-first at fourteen dollars per hour, not to exceed forty hours a week. The city manager is hereby directed to establish a summer seasonal staffing program to encourage participation among local high school students in the community. There's a reason that I would like to establish it. First, we need, uh, our city needs to be clean and built. And I, I'm talking about downtown, I'm talking about parks, I'm talking about all around the city. So what I'm looking for, and, um, I'm looking for the following expectation. I'm looking for young people who will be on time. I would really be impressed if they were fifteen minutes early. I'm looking for young people who are teachable. I'm not looking for someone that says, oh, I know how to weed. No, I want you to be teachable. When Jason said there's a safe way to do it, I want him to learn the safe way to do it. I'm looking for young people who are excited about working for the city of Nelsonville. And finally, I'm looking for young people who will be proud of their city and the work they're gonna be performing. Because guess what? If they're proud, they will have parents, they will have aunts and uncles, and grandparents.
If they're proud, they will have parents, they will have aunts and uncles and grandparents who will be proud as well. And finally, you as a city council will be proud of. We often complain about our young people not working, not being able to work, when we can provide opportunities to teach them how to work. If I may use the law director, he had a summer job that probably encouraged them to go to college. And I'm hoping that maybe some of these kids will have an opportunity to do good, hard physical labor that they can be proud of. Do you have any questions?
And I just say, so my summer job was with ODOT taking up dead deer. Pleasant experience work for these young people. So with that, I assume uh, to do this, we need to amend the agenda.
I get counsel's line.
So, uh, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add ordinance thirty-four and twenty-five. Any council discussion on this?
I see.
Yes.
And I apologize for this, but I kind of have an issue with paying the young person fourteen dollars an hour when you've got a head lifeguard making twelve dollars and seventy-five cents an hour, that's there every day. And I do apologize, I just.
It's not in the third apology.
I just think it's unfair.
You may be right.
And I know what you're going for.
Yeah.
I mean, initiative, and I understand that, but is it fair to these people that have other people's lives in their hands? And that's the only reason I'm saying.
Should we raise the lifeguard salaries?
Yes.
I think we should switch the two.
Okay, um, okay, if, if I may, um, this is just to amend the agenda, not to have the discussion.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're fine. You're fine. Um, so at this point, we need a roll call to verify this. Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Fine. We're making the agenda to add this.
That's all.
So we can read it. Yes. Joseph Sol?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, okay. Um, if, if Nancy, if you want to um, amend this ordinance, if you have a recommendation, I'll, I'll second it.
Well, at least make the head lifeguards fourteen dollars an hour along with that seasonal individual that's going to be here helping out. That would be my suggestion.
That makes sense to me, it's only dollar twenty-five cents.
Well, they have.
For a lifeguard difference.
Sorry, yeah, they also have to have specific training.
Yes.
For that, sorry.
So fourteen is also the base, A, you're, for anybody entering one of those, the kind of job you're talking about. Anybody who's going to come in here for anything less than fourteen is going to get stolen away by a lawn care company that's going to probably give them more relaxed hours and a lot more freedom to do something like that. Like, I mean, it's just the way the market works. Well, I meant Mr. Holmes is switching the twelve seventy-five and the fourteen, switching them both. So the seasonal employee gets twelve seventy-five and the lifeguard gets fourteen.
I think what Mr. Peck just said, um, kind of answers that for, for me.
Also seems to degrade labor, I mean, if there's, if we can just swap it between twelve seventy-five and fourteen and drop this guy's down, it would seem to just completely devalue the existence of labor in our time.
Can I make a projection?
Sure.
Head lifeguard fifteen dollars an hour. Uh, lifeguard and fee hold at fourteen.
So I'll make the motion to amend the ordinance to reflect Mr. Holmes' recommendation.
Oh, another second.
Are, are we changing the fourteen dollar per hour for the ones that he wants to get for outside assistance from the pool?
Keeping that same.
We're doing the lifeguard attendance and the seasonal fourteen. And then the head lifeguards are fifteen. That be reasonable?
It's very nearly a living wage.
Yeah, I, I, in Mr. Cohen and I are going to have conversations about safety, aren't we, Mr. Cohen? Um, I, I do want the young people, I have to call them children, but I want them to be safe. I don't have to pick up the phone and call some parent and say, they were grouping off, I don't want any group off, I want, there's work to be done, am I right? Ready to go?
I was privileged to get hired not once, but twice during the summer season as a lifeguard at the Nelsonville Community Hall. I felt honored then, the same as I do tonight, as I say that to you, it's a privilege that you have the opportunity to fulfill, but you have to commit to it because it's hot down there when it's eighty-nine degrees and you've been there for about five hours, and it is very important to come to work on time. I, I don't care what time your shift is, you need to go to work. But as I said, I was honored to have been selected, and I taught swimming classes, I, I had a lot of people that I've met in my lifetime, and I think it has a lot to do with who I am today.
And, and I think the other thing is advantage is that Jason's got some very experienced season employees. And there's a lot of jobs that if they're given the training, you can give them a, a weed eater, and they can be weed eating from the time they start till the time they finish. That frees up his staff to do important jobs that might otherwise not get done. So it really helps, it helps everybody across the board. And finally, I would suggest at the end of the season, I think which would be an ideal situation, to invite these young people in, invite their parents, and have the city council recognize them. You know, you might have some nieces, nephew, grandchildren, that might be in this group. But, uh, and I, and I know that the school has reached out to us about, do we have any jobs? The answer is yes.
So is there going to be a cap on the number of people that we're going to be doing?
No more than twelve. Seasonal. No more than twelve, and not go beyond uh, August thirty-first because school starts, I think, August twenty-first, I believe you.
My question is, is do we need an ordinance creating a special circumstances for the students? Because we, to where we don't fall into an age discrimination suit due to the fact that we're only offering this to a certain class of individuals? And not people over the, over school age or anything like that? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to look.
No, no, I understand what you're saying, and I, I, and I've because we're calling it seasonal, we're restricting it to that group. If, I mean, we could have seasonal older people.
But we can have seasonal any age group.
That's true, but I'm really asking, because I'm serving for two purposes. I, I want to provide opportunity for our young people, maybe that'll keep them from vandalizing.
Like, I, I understand, I fully agree with the purpose.
Yeah.
But my, my question is, how do we do it to make sure that we don't open ourselves up for a lawsuit? Because we have individuals in the community that anything that's a little bit unproprietary would get slammed into a lawsuit.
Yeah, so that's a good point, it could be college students potentially too.
Well, if, if I may, just, just one thought, the, the city manager did in his proposal include the language, is here, the city manager is hereby directed to establish a summer seasonal staffing program to encourage participation among local high school students in the community. I think that language is targeted precisely towards this concern, I mean, you know, problem in the laws, there's no, never a, you know, perfect fit for everything, I think that provides a good, strong basis for accomplishing the city manager's purposes and goals. Okay.
Which I totally try, I just want to make sure that, uh, you know, we're not going to get an age discrimination suit.
As he begins hiring the seasonal staff, if he has a concern, maybe, you know, maybe try to see the manager come back and just ask for more. Basically, that language to get beefed up into its own ordinance, but I think for now, I think this language is sufficient. So, if I may, I crunched a few numbers, I didn't use a calculator, but uh, if we have twelve staff at fifteen an hour, we're looking at about fifty-four hundred a week, twenty-one thousand a month, sixty-three thousand for this three months. Is council okay with that?
That's.
No, it says seasonal staff.
That's just, that's not counting the lifeguard and stuff.
No, yeah.
What, the lifeguard was supposed, the head lifeguard was supposed to get fifteen?
Yes.
Correct.
He's going to get fourteen.
Fourteen, yes.
Okay, well, it's still going to be approximately. I mean, we don't have a number crunched here that's exact.
I didn't come up with one.
And what's the simple?
So say you know, we're basically going through the summer month when school's out session.
Absolutely.
If I can say, just uh, to lend some credence to the city manager's idea or credibility maybe, it's actually not the uh, seasonal pay that uh, caused me a little, just a couple of second thoughts back here, I know most of us know how close the pool runs each year. Its budget is razor thin, so I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about the wage increases there, but I, I don't have a number ready because we just discussed it.
I don't either. We just had two call-ups because of cold weather, rain, so I'm sure that they didn't get compensated those days because they were sent home, so. We've, we've.
I mean, it's rare that employee clocks exactly forty hours in a situation like that.
Correct.
Hitting a clock, it just almost, I, I try to do it every week and rarely do, you know what I mean? So, there's that, it's what we're assuming for upper end, forty hours, they probably won't, probably won't hit that. You know, just show them life.
I have, when I was out being working, I had a, had forty hours in the end.
Now, did you ever have a downhill trip to work or was they all uphill?
Two way from.
The place to serve it, you guys, it's not a place to make a profit from.
We're just not trying to lose the law. But, but it's, it's not the concern that I was raising, but it's a Mr. Peck's point though, there's going to be, if it's raining, there are not going to be, or lightning, none of those workers are going to be working, so that's just, I'm not going to. Okay, so where are we at on this?
We're at.
For the change in the amount.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Yes.
Sonic?
Yes.
Joseph Sol?
Yes.
The flowers?
Me.
Cam?
Yes.
Yes. So that's just a second reading there.
Well, either second reading or suspended.
Yeah, we want to pass this on.
Yes.
Alright, so I'll motion to suspend. Second.
We're suspending the rules?
Yes.
We didn't read it.
Well, what we're saying is we're putting in to suspend the rules instead of making it go into, because we changed, we changed, we changed it to a wording.
Okay. If I may, we should read the ordinance. Well, I just put in the the suspension and emergency rules in the draft that I have here, so I can go ahead and please do, that's okay.
Save the clerk.
Ordinance thirty-four dash twenty-five, an ordinance setting the authorized staff in the city departments and repealing ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-five. Whereas the existing staffing ordinance has been amended several times, whereas the purpose of this ordinance is to accurately track and reflect all amendments throughout the twenty-twenty-five calendar year. Ordinance now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Staffing in the police department is as follows, one full-time chief, two full-time sergeants, nine full-time police officers, and one full-time clerk. Police department pay chart hourly rate, see exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Staffing in the fire department is as follows, one full-time chief, one full-time lieutenant, one full-time senior firefighter, two full-time firefighters, and thirteen part-time firefighters. Fire department pay chart hourly rate, see exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Staffing in the utility department is as follows, one full-time service director, one full-time wastewater operator of record, one part-time water operator of record for a maximum of twenty-five, twenty-five hours per week unless increased by the city manager, eleven utility technicians. Utility department pay chart hourly rate, see exhibit A attached here to and incorporated here by reference. Staffing in the auditor's office is as follows, one elected city auditor, one full-time deputy auditor and two full-time account clerks. Additionally, there is a city treasurer elected. Auditor, deputy auditor, and account clerk pay chart, see exhibit A attached here here to and incorporated herein by reference. Staffing in the city manager's offices as follows, one full-time city manager, one full-time code officer, and one full-time administrative assistant, one part-time law director, and one part-time city prosecutor. There may be one acting city manager assigned by the city council according to the charter, those additional duties will come with a twenty-five hundred dollars a month stipend to cover the additional responsibilities and liabilities. City manager, code officer, administrative assistant, law director, and city prosecutor pay charts, city manager rate referred to contract. Code officer pay scale, hourly rate, see exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Administrative assistant pay scale, hourly rate, see exhibit A attached here to and incorporated here by reference. Law director and prosecutor rate refer to their respective contracts. Staffing for one council clerk and seven council members is as follows, council clerk pay scale monthly rate, see exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. Council member's salary is one hundred a month, council president's salary is two hundred dollars per month. Seasonal staff, one seasonal aquatic center manager at ten thousand, five hundred dollars per season, up to three head lifeguards at fifteen hundred, sorry, fifteen dollars per hour, and up to twenty part-time aquatic center lifeguard attendants at fourteen dollars per hour. Up to twelve seasonal staff to assist any department as directed by the city manager and to serve between June first and August thirty-first at fourteen dollars per hour, not to exceed forty hours a week. City manager is hereby directed to establish a summer seasonal staffing program to encourage participation among local high school students in the community. Benefits and offers for full-time union employees will match approved language in their respective collective bargaining agreements. This may include PTO, insurance coverage, certification, training pay, stipends, and more. Higher department heads, benefits and offerings and limitations for the police chief, fire chief, service director, sewer plant director, water plant director, police clerk, deputy auditor will operate according to past best city practice employee handbook and set policies. This includes insurance coverage, PTO, vacation payout rules, pension pickup, and more. Part-time non-seasonal employees shall be offered dental, eye and life insurance at full cost to the employee. Health insurance will not be offered to part-time employees. Nothing in this ordinance shall be used or construed to overrule or repeal future pay increases or offer benefits already approved by contractor city council ordinance. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be backdated and made effective as of January the first, twenty twenty-five. The city auditor shall take all steps necessary to complete and effectuate any pay increase which shall be enacted pursuant to the conditions of this ordinance. Ordinance twenty-six, twenty-five is hereby abolished or repealed. Five members of council voting to dispense with two readings of this ordinance, rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance, and this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading pursuant to ORC seven-three, one point one five, Nelsonville City Charter, sections four point oh nine to four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC seven-three, one point four zero and Article four, sections four point zero nine to four point one one of Nelsonville City Charter as an emergency in the operation of the city government. As the city needs to ensure it maintains its appropriate staffing levels without interruption, and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace. and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption duly enacted by council on first reading on the twenty-seventh day of May.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to start this from the beginning, motion to suspend the rules. So, council discussion on suspension. Roll call on suspension.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Zissal?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Absolutely.
Second?
Any citizens' comments?
Good job.
Thank you.
I was.
Council.
Good job then.
Council, council discussion.
Congratulations.
Call the roll.
Mr. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Zissal?
Yes.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-four twenty-five passed. Okay, Mr. Holmes, do you have a floor again?
Thank you. Uh, the pool is officially open, although closed on Saturday due to cold weather. Uh, they've, they also, they, it was closed today too. So far, they've sold quite a few seasonal passes and as the weather picks up, we're sure that's going to creep. We are making some safety improvements down at the pool. I've been coordinating with Jason and, uh, electrician and changes to the concession area. So, we've all been in, in communication as well as council and Peck. There are going to be safety concerns and they're going to greatly improve the safety of the pool. I don't want anybody to hurt. And, uh, so we're doing, we're taking care of that. And the funds for that will come out, Eddie Johnson, okay? Uh, Washington Street project, we have no startup date. That date is up in the air for one particular reason. Prairie Hills. If we can get it done before the Prairie Hills, we'll do it. If not, it'll have to be done after Prairie Hills. We don't want anything to disrupt Prairie Hills.
Is there anything in the works as to, uh, yeah, I think we can get it done, but just in case we don't, have an alternate route or something?
Uh, we're not going to do an alternate route.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. It, it'll, Mr. Flowers?
It'll be done. It's part of the project. They were, they were planning on starting on Washington Street.
The sidewalks?
No, he summed up the, the, we, we've got a, the, the sidewalks will be completed.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. They, they, uh, got held up a little bit. There's a storm drain that was in the way that's all been taken care of, they're moving it. And then, um, there was some concrete that didn't turn out very well and I wasn't very pretty fit, so they tore it out. The, for the money that we're paying on this project, we're not going to sell for subpar concrete.
Yeah, I agree.
Did they give enough estimate time of how long it's going to take?
They did. It's, it's not very long. It's maybe the end of June.
Okay, did I do anything else? Because I know, I know it's weather dependent.
It's not going to take them long. They've already started the, the, laying the electric. That's when they ran into storm. Nobody knew was there. It's not very long. Um, so we've got, that's got to be new so they can finish the electric. The, the weights, the lights, getting the new lights and, because they're maybe worn, so they're waiting. We, we've been in communication with the Prairie Hills committee and, uh, it's an alternate route would be totally disruptive and, uh, so it would be better if we have to to put it off once the Prairie Hills have done. So, and we've been in communication with the contractors and, you know, so everybody's on board with that. The Canal Street project, we finally heard today that the reconstruction meeting is scheduled for mid-June and start by July fourth.
They're going to work on holiday?
Just after July fourth.
Right.
Monday, little start. They, they, actually, the email says right around July fourth. The code enforcement officer is doing a good job. We've had a lot of positive comments. Uh, he has been out, uh, doing high grass and blanks and has been very successful and, uh, we have a lot of calls coming in asking for the code officer. So, often it's settling in very well. The master plan, I did not have those prepared yet tonight. Uh, they will be ready, the old master plans that I'm talking about so the council can review it. They'll be available tonight. Tonight, they started apparel cap neutering program. Just reporting on that. Okay, the check report. The city auditor and I have been in conversation, um, mainly because I didn't know what it was for. Because when I was city manager, we didn't have a need for a check report. And I understand during the process, especially when you had, um, acting city managers, that that probably was necessary, but really don't feel there's necessary that this duplicate work went up my recommendation. I think, uh, uh, the city auditor, the agreement, we've got enough checks between myself and him that it's not necessary.
Not necessary for council to review the check reports and approve them?
That's why you got me. If I miss something, you can blame me. Well, I'm here. Okay. That's it. That's all I got. Any, does council have any questions?
Did we get any word back on trying to get into the account to the cameras down there at the park? Were you able to get in contact with the company?
I have not. I was on all that.
All right.
Definitely.
All right.
We was.
I, it's, I, it's just something I thought of while you were talking, so I figured out that.
Sure.
I have, uh, with, um, so discussion came up about the Danny Johnson, uh, six hundred and thirty-five thousand or whatever it is. And I made a comment, uh, that I think we ought to first, before we invest money in fixing that pool up, we should fix the pool. Um, is that being looked at? Is there a leak in the pool? Has it been fixed?
That has, that has not been fixed. It's, it's, we don't wear near what it has. It's a lot small. Can't get anybody coming and look at it. It said that the Nelsonville pools, every one of the pool in the country leads and they, just everybody's booked as they begin to hear trying to get into pools to look at them. They're set up kind of at the end of the season.
And if we are waiting until the end of the season for that, people may as well be safe while they're using the pool and working at the pool this season.
Oh, absolutely. I, the, the issue that we looked at should have been done a period ago. And, uh, one of the issues about the concession stand, there's a big four-by-eight sheet. Two four-by-eight sheets fly with it. They fold up and they're just hooked on, they hang onto the ceiling. Those kids stand underneath there, all day long in there and it's extremely hot in the concession center. So, we're putting an air conditioner in the concession stand, which Pepsi told us it would be better for their products if it was air conditioned because it gets so hot in there. We're taking.
The fountain product?
The, the fountains and the slushies. We're having the screen taken out. It's not going to be a screen all the way around there any longer. It's going to be Lexan, which is.
Going to be tempered glass.
Okay, tempered glass. The last I heard was Lexan.
Yeah.
But, doesn't matter. It's where it can't be burnt and it's going to have a slide window in it, so when somebody walks out, that keeps the cool air in there for the employees and and then lights, the lights in the bathroom, how they were designed, they, they were designed on switches like these, but they're old switches and they no longer work. Uh, so the only way to turn the lights on and off in the bathroom is Leslie or one of the kids has to go back to the electric panel breaker
Right.
for the bathroom, so we're having that changed out also, so. And then we also have a company coming in to do shades.
To do what?
Shades.
Okay.
Putting up shades.
Why not update the motion sensors in there to allow that to happen?
That's what I just said. We're doing that.
To where it's, well, just you want to update the sensors and everything to where she doesn't have to go back for the break.
Right. We're, we're updating the sensor so it doesn't have to happen and we're updating all the lights.
It, it doesn't make sense for a person to stand on a metal ladder at a pool.
Oh, no, I, I, I fully understand, but, uh, like I say, with the technology there is today.
Right.
With the lights.
Right.
And if, if they're going to do that in bathrooms to save out, you might want to consider going to LED lights.
Yeah, we're, we're.
And then you can operate, with, with the technology, you can put a, a digital transfer in there where you can operate anything in that pool.
So, we're, we're putting, uh, LED lights in and then it's got automated switches similar to these with the motion sensors, so if, when they close, if, nobody has to worry about turning the lights off. But then, I forget how many minutes it is since it's kicked off, but it'll automatically shut off.
Well, that's, that's a big decision, but that's okay.
Yeah. It's not the one, it's not those exact ones.
Right, I know. I, I don't want to say, you just, but there's, there's the technology that you have, if you're going to operate, you might as well do it right to where anybody here at council or you as a city manager can go in and if the lights are on, they're wrong.
But then you're back to leaving it to one person where if they're on switches, if somebody.
Well, you can set it up as both.
Just like the one out there just shut off, just went off.
Yeah.
Those, those lights have been there for over thirty years. Now, to be very honest with you, all the shot.
There, there's three sensors in the trash room and they're about that tall and then they, they, you know. They, they must have been the first sensors to have that. In a final one, if I may, just one final thing and I'll finish up. I've been very proud of Jason and his department and our contractors. When they find a problem out there, when they do these projects, they're going to find storm sewers. They're going to find storm sewers connected or whatever. They're going to find things connected to the wrong place and no one is looking the other way. They're stopping, they're getting an estimate and they're fixing the problem. And I think you should be very proud of your utility.
Anything else for me?
Greg, you're to be commended. In a short period of time, you've been here, you've done all of, and I don't mean this against anybody, but you've taken the initiative, you're leading the path. Thank you. I come every year about the pool and when they see me, they go. I won't have to do that this year.
And speaking of the pool, I want to comment on it. There's two other old speakers that came down because I was texting Eric after I talked earlier and he's actually waiting on the parts to rebuild those other two speakers. They're really old speakers, but they're very sought after and he said that they've been up for probably twenty years and, and they're very sought after, but you can't buy brand-new parts, so you have to buy ones that people are selling and cashing. So, he's going to re, actually rebuild the other two also.
Thank you, Jason, for all the nice things you said.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Uh, moving on to go to the order, uh, Ms. Sonic?
Nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Joseph Saul?
Um, I have two things. Um, I wanted to thank the auditor and the city manager for allowing me to try my hand at drafting the legislation that came out of the finance committee. I want to thank you for your patience as I did not get them to, um, very, with, with a lot of time, um, to review them prior to this meeting. Um, and I want to thank you for the significant feedback, um, and revisions, um, that were made to those, um, to get them to the state that they were when we considered them earlier tonight. Um, the other thing is, um, I have uh, personally as a private citizen, I have joined, um, a citizens group called What's Next Nelsonville. Um, they have a survey out on their Facebook page where they're trying to get a temperature check, um, from residents of the community on your perspective of the current state of affairs and whether or not you feel like you have a voice within Nelsonville politics. Um, so I, I would like to invite everyone, um, who sees this, um, to take that survey. Um, and I would also like to invite you to What's Next Nelsonville's, um, game night on, um, Thursday afternoon at four P M. in the library, um, ahead of the war maps meeting. Um, we were calling it War Maps, um, because it would be a strategy game designed to prime our minds for thinking about redistricting. So, I hope to see folks there.
Thank you. Mr. Flowers?
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Taylor?
Um, I do have a question for the, uh, auditor. Um, previous meeting, we discussed, um, uh, sending, you mentioned in your, your, uh, auditor's report today about, um, R E A and, uh, we've talked previously about sending out delinquency letters. There's a note of that in your report. I wondered if there was any status update on that.
Yeah, um, I'm glad you asked and you're, guys are probably glad this last time you hear my voice today. Um, I, I actually did need to ask the council before June first, uh, for their permission um, to continue the Rita delinquency program started by, uh, by the council last year. It involves basically just mailed correspondence and then working with agents to get folks compliant. Um, it was at a cost of about seven hundred dollars last year and collected about thirty thousand seven hundred, so. They actually need a motion in the minutes, uh, to continue it each year. So, I'd ask the council at this late hour if you'd be willing to consider that motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, continue the, the delinquency program.
I'll second.
Okay. Clerk, probably. Thank you, please. How about it?
Okay. I'm going to wear a scarf.
Yeah.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Saul?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson? Mr. Peck?
Yes, thank you.
And then the only other thing is that I hope everybody had a wonderful, uh, Memorial Day and, um, be safe too.
Thank you. Mr. Lawson?
I would want to commend, uh, police and fire department through the storms we had this last, uh, past week. They did an excellent job in, uh, detouring the traffic, taking care of falling limbs down chestnut and everything and around the area. I mean, it, it was, it was a mess. I was out in that, uh, when it happened and the response that, uh, they gave and the way it was taken care of was, is commendable.
Thank you. Mr. Peck?
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay. Um, I have something to bring up. We don't have to get into it tonight, but we do have a vacancy on the Ad Heart Commission. Um, we previously asked for letters of interest. I don't believe we did receive any, if I'm correct in that. So, I'm not sure how the, uh, council would like to move forward with that. Again, we, we could address it now or at the next meeting?
I would just extend the deadline.
Okay. We'll take letters of interest till the next council meeting, which is, what, June ninth? I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, maybe we could put that out there, Mr. Holmes, that we are doing so. And with that, um, ten. And I'll make a motion to go into executive session under O R C one-twenty-one-point-two-two G, Personnel and Legal Matters, inviting in, uh, Mr. Holmes and Mr. Rose.
So, good news and that's a, that's dealing with a, um, collective bargaining issue and, uh, that public records.
Okay, duly noted. Um, I made a motion. Is there a second? Did I say?
I'm going to go.
Okay.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Zissal?
Yes.
Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes, and the time is ten fifteen. Motion to return from executive session at ten forty-eight.
Second.
Um, Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Flapp?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor, yes?
Motion there, here.
Motion, please. Second.
Mr. Peck?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Sonic?
Yes.
Mr. Joseph Saul?
Yes.
Mr. Flapp?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor, yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. And we burn at, what is it?
Excuse me, sir? Ten forty-nine.
Mr. Flowers, I want you to know this is not my.